My name is Still, you have my phone now.
Still.
If there's any more appeals, we have some administrative matters to get through and then we'll take the appeals as the order on the agenda. So the first matter to take up is the minutes from the June meeting. Do I have a motion to consider the minutes from June?
I normally abstain if I wasn't here in the meeting before, but if I did, we wouldn't have a court.
You can't vote, you can't.
You can.
Okay.
I prefer to abstain, but I can't.
I wasn't here either, so I've read them and I assume that that's what happened.
If you wanna.
Anybody wants to correct, then let us know.
I didn't see it. Second by Max, all in favor?
I'd say.
Alright.
Opposed? Same, motion's carried.
Alright, do we have three decisions to go through?
I've got six.
Three?
I've got five.
No, for the decision you want.
Separate ones now, I'm gonna throw them.
Oh, oh, oh. Okay.
Sixty-eight oh five East Tennessee Street. First resolution is to approve a specific use permit for fifty-one hundred square foot building in this special business transitional district. Get a motion and a second.
Motion approved.
By Jamie, second by Nick, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion's carried, same property, this is Candago Bank, sixty-eight oh five East Tennessee Street. This is approval of a specific use permit to have a drive-through in this special business transitional zone.
Motion approved.
Motion by Jamie, second by Nick, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion's carried.
Morehouse flats?
Second. Morehouse flats, this is approval of an accessory structure located in a side yard.
Motion approved?
Yes.
Motion by Dan.
Second.
Second by Nick.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes, are we able to down road?
Downing, yep.
Two.
Two for Downing Road. Is there a motion to approve?
First one is area variance for a driveway curb cut width.
I approve, or motion to approve.
Motion.
On second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Passes and then there's a second one as well.
This is approval of an area variance for a location of a curb cut half a foot from the property line.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Okay, excellent.
That's all the old business, now we can hear from one eighteen Andrews. Is there anyone here to speak about? Come on up.
Is anybody here interested in this case other than the applicant? Do you agree to waive my reading of the notice? Thank you, saving me some time, thank you.
Man, do you need to wait till six thirty-five?
It's only six thirty-three, so give us a minute, it started at six thirty-five. Sorry for the false start. I thought no way that that would not take five minutes. Leo Satch.
I presume one of them is Stephen Merchant?
Yep.
And what's your name?
It's always the longest minutes. I'm staring at that clock, I'm staring at it for five minutes.
Did you need a chance to look at the drawings?
It's really amazing, because time flies otherwise.
Did you need a chance to look at the drawings again?
I always take.
Watch clock never tends. Six thirty-five, do you agree to waive reading of the notice?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
Is there anyone here with an interest in this case besides the applicants?
No.
Okay, go ahead, you wanna do a new drawing?
Before you get started, Mackenzie, I just wanna say that the town is declaring lead agency for purposes of seeker. It's a type-two action for an area variance for a single-family, two-family, or three-family residence. And there are no negative environmental impacts associated with most action. Okay, go ahead.
You wanna expand the driveway?
Yes, so that we can fit two per second.
Okay, and you went to the highway department, I presume?
Yes.
One more question. And you went to the highway department, I presume?
That's in here, Sharon?
Yeah, we sent it, our department sent it.
Highway denial, yeah.
The denial's in there. And there's a survey.
It's the best one, guys?
Mm-hmm.
There's another one there.
Yeah, there's a second one, there's a.
Can't draw anything?
Right here. Okay, do you want me to change anything else, just let me know, you can go ahead, just let us know what you're looking at doing.
So if you would explain what your.
Oh, oh yeah, sure, so um, yeah, so this is just showing that we're expanding it closer to the property line here. Um, going extending all the way to the road. Um, and then we also have a letter in here from our neighbors. Um, that is just giving us their permission and just to find, finding, we had them sign it. They think it's used with.
There's no lot coverage issue, right? Because it's a small enough chain? Has somebody thought about that, or?
Respect, this is my first time in the office this weekend.
I don't think so.
I can imagine.
I don't think so, I'm not looking at the survey.
No.
Okay.
And this is the all, this is current, the light red? And this is new, dark red?
Yes, right, yep.
I've got, um, just to specify the variances, I've got one variance of eleven feet, so this total area here is twenty-one feet, is that correct?
Yes.
So I have one area variance for a curb cut width of eleven feet. For the curb cut to be twenty-one feet to a single car garage. And secondly, it looks like this is closer to the property line than eight feet. So there's an area variance request, three point two five feet to allow this to be four point seven five feet from the property line. Do I have all that correct?
Yep.
So lot coverage in R two is fifty, it can be up to fifty percent and.
We're not gonna get close, yeah, makes sense. The other thing we're supposed to ask for is about alternatives. So some people when they come in and talked about not having a curb cut, but having just the top of the driveway paved, is that something that you guys could consider?
Um, the only thing that we, when we talked with the paving company, they didn't recommend that.
I believe they could have a turnout, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
They could do this. My understanding.
You're not saying you have to, we have to consider alternatives.
That wasn't their preference, Fitz.
So just kick it off, um. So for context, the request that you've made not only exceeds the width per code for a single car garage, but it's actually greater than that for a two-car garage. Um, which per code, correct me if I'm wrong, it's pretty smart.
Eighteen?
Is eighteen. I think twenty-one's a nonstarter from the beginning, so it's, we can maybe talk from there, but I think to Danny's point, I think there's probably an alternative. So I live like a quarter mile from you and every neighbor of mine has a driveway somewhere, so I'm sympathetic, it's a pain in the butt to have to move your cars. And I can appreciate that your neighbor has a two, you know, double width, but it would be the second on the street. So, you know, one of our concerns as a board generally is precedent, so if we allow yours, because your neighbor has it, then next thing you know, we have to allow it for everybody. So short of building a second, you know, stall in your garage, I think there are solutions that we could potentially work through. Danny's point, you are entitled to an improved parking area or turnout to be located in conjunction with the driveway, no greater than twelve feet by eighteen feet long. Which I assume would be plenty for you to be able to get two cars in and then back out one at a time. Um, I suspect your paving company probably doesn't wanna do it, because it's, you know, a little bit trickier and more driveways, you know, more asphalt to be put down. So I, I would assume it is an option, I'm sure a paving company will, would do that for you.
Okay.
Um, would you be, I think you still, we would still run into the issue of being too close to the.
Correct.
To the.
It would eliminate any other variance, so it wouldn't need more variance.
You don't want to say too.
Curb cut would stay.
Right.
Ten feet. I don't know where the, where the gray line is between having that be a two-stall garage or a two. There's, I think, a difference, it may be subtle, between a turnout versus a driveway widening to become a two-stall garage. That's how my own driveway is, it's a single lane all the way up to a certain distance from the garage and then it opens up to be two. I don't know whether or not allowing this turnaround at, you know, near the garage, we would be kind of skirting that.
Could the driveway go on the other side?
Um, no, that's where the lawn is and the walkway, yeah. That would just, yeah, that would just be in the middle of the front yard then, so.
Typically, the board has asked for, in my experience, either the turnaround or the, um, if they have granted a variance, they've kept it to eighteen minimum. You know, they've kept it to at least not more than a two-car garage, um, from what I can remember.
Could you guys leave with eighteen, or is that?
Well, you, again, just in talking with the paving company, just said that twenty-one is the standard double wide that they do and.
Do you have no specific need for twenty-one?
Yes, no, we, we didn't request it, this is just what they gave us and we were trying to get it done as quick as possible, so.
So if they were to maintain the curb cut width and then at
Do twelve by eighteen.
Twelve by eighteen in front of the garage, you're saying that they wouldn't require the second variance for the distance to the property line?
They would need, they would need a variance, well, no, it is a curb cut, it's the curb cut, Max, it's not the driveway, it's the curb cut.
But they still need the, the second variance even if they did eighteen feet?
Side yard.
Uh, it's, it's like a foot.
I believe so.
Very close.
It's really close.
Yes, because they said, the code says curb cuts, driveways, and parking areas or lots shall be located eight feet from, more from the side front of your.
It's less than a foot, isn't it?
That includes the turnout, so yeah, you would need one variance and use them in that.
Sure.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't matter that the property on the other side, the driveway is two feet from our property line.
What do they favor, too?
On the, you're saying not one sixteen, but on the other side?
Yeah, their driveway is two feet from our property line.
That's true for the driveways.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's not really what we're here to review.
People took a lot of notice.
No good. I mean, you could raise it with.
It's a, yeah, it's a concern you could raise, but at the end of the day, we are here to review the variances.
Yeah, it's a force.
Yeah.
Okay.
Requested, yeah. The other thing too is, you know, the thirteen foot width is shown and it's showing an eight foot. But if they were to keep what the code allows for a single width driveway of ten feet plus eight, plus eight feet, no, twelve, they're telling the twelve, so that is twenty-two feet.
So. Because the existing driveway is wider than the code, right?
Actually.
Because you said a single car doesn't, doesn't get thirteen feet, right?
It's ten feet.
Right, ten feet, right.
This is already thirteen feet, I think without we're reviewing this, I think you'd like to variance to make it thirteen. Give it three foot from the ten.
I guess what I was getting to is if, if they were to do a thirteen and we were to allow a twelve-foot um, parking area, that would be a twenty-three foot wide, which is actually wider than what we're requesting, so I just, we want to avoid that situation.
I'm sorry, how, where did you get twenty-three from?
In what situation?
He's saying that if it's thirteen now and then you were to improve a parking area, you were doing the turnout here, you get twelve feet.
Sorry, I might have.
So he's saying it would be thirteen plus twelve.
Twenty-five, sorry.
Twenty-five.
Oh, okay, so you're talking about, oh, sorry, the turnout, not just widening as you get farther.
The turnout, they can only go so far without needing the variance, because it's near the property line, so they're gonna have to agree on that distance. And then we would give a variance, if that's what they wanna do, if they have a turnout, then we just identify the distance and say you get that variance from the side property line.
And just so I understand, you're saying have a turnout here instead of widening it here?
Instead of changing the curb cut, so the curb cut itself is not gonna widen, you'll drive up here and then you'll branch out into a turnout area here.
Okay, so this, so, but this, down here, this whole width will be wider, not just.
That's exactly right, so you park your cars and not play, uh, with all Tetris.
Okay. Okay, so it won't just be a T.
So you're, you're not gonna have to play Tetris anymore, but you're not gonna have to curb cut to an extended curb cut.
Let's see, okay.
I don't think they could. You're saying by changing the eight feet addition to twelve feet?
No.
No, I'm saying that there, a parking area which is allowed for code can be twelve feet
Twelve feet.
by eighteen.
Right.
Right.
Right, which I don't think we want to, you know, permit here, it would be, I think, excessive.
Right, the parking area though has to, you can't like starting.
You could do a parking area that extends where this shows, so the variance would be the same, it would still be.
It could be like.
Right.
It would still be, uh, whatever it is, four point seven five feet from the property line, so you could say do it like this.
So what you.
The driveway just has to be a uniform width up until that parking area.
Mm-hmm. Yes, right, which is gonna be.
So what, you're saying that it can't widen out to become essentially a two.
If you're doing it that way, you can't widen it out until you're within twenty feet of your house.
Up there.
The driveway has to be a uniform width until you're twenty feet away from the house.
You feel like starting here.
For, for a two-stall garage, but they don't, they don't have that.
That's just for any, so, says driveway shall maintain a uniform width extending directly from the curb cut radius into the lot and toward a garage or parking area, parking lot or area, and only widening to the width of a garage door or to a parking area within twenty feet of the door or area.
Okay, and that would still be within twenty feet of the garage door.
Correct.
Yes, not until twenty feet from the garage door, it has to be a uniform width.
Is that twenty feet width, twenty feet this way or twenty feet down?
No, twenty feet.
Towards your house.
And from your house.
Okay, so.
When you approach your house and you get twenty feet away, that's when this is gonna come out and do the turnaround.
Okay, but this, so this width wouldn't have to necessarily change?
This width, we're, I think what, I think what we're talking about is you, you turning it out to this width.
Okay.
You're gonna, it's not gonna be.
More like a bottleneck.
It's gonna be like a bottleneck, so it's gonna turn out to this width that you're showing here.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And our variance for your side property line is still gonna be four point seven five.
To the width or to eighteen feet?
Okay.
You wanna go out to this width or to eighteen feet, since it was love or two?
Yeah, I would be careful.
The width, the width is not changing, the width is staying here.
So you're saying to this.
The existing driveway's staying.
Right.
When I was studying the curb cut.
And this is the tall width.
Right, how, you're saying expand out to where they're showing?
I'm saying have a turnaround that goes out to here, so you're giving them a turnaround, that's not more than, or that's not closer than four point seven five feet from the side driveway.
Their current driveway is thirteen though.
And so maybe we do a variance to give them thirteen.
So thirteen plus eight is?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
So thirteen plus five, that'd make it eighteen.
How much do you need to give them?
Exactly, that's why I put this.
Bottleneck it to eighteen, and then there's.
Gotcha.
But it's standard.
There's no variance for the curb side cut then.
So we're giving them a five by twenty area space.
Is that right? Five this way, twenty this way?
Yeah. Yes.
Makes sense to me?
Yes, correct.
And then how far is that from the property line?
Twenty, oh, excuse me, from the property line.
How far is that from the property line?
Um.
Four and three-quarter feet, I think?
The variance was for an additional three and a quarter feet and then, so then it'd be a.
It'll be three feet less than this.
So a quarter foot.
Oh, it would be.
It was, they were asking for eleven foot, I think? It was, they were asking for twenty-one.
Yes.
So that's a curb cut then.
How far is it?
Oh, curb, right, right, you're right, you're right.
The curb cuts eliminated.
Property line.
The variance saw is for an additional three point two five, additional feet allowed from the property line, so we're minusing three feet.
Right.
What car driveway, how far is that to the property line?
It's less than a foot.
How far is the whole length of the driveway?
No, we're just saying if you get the five by twenty here, how far is that going to be from the side property line?
Yeah.
If you bring up the.
Because we still have to consider that variance and how far this is.
Right here.
So if this only comes out five feet from here?
There would be eighteen total feet.
Yeah, so that would be
And then this.
three feet less than what it would.
The variance would be less by three feet, I think, so the variance would be.
But they were only seeking three point two five.
Thirty, thirty, seeking three point two five.
Yeah, but now he'd be seeking, he'd be three feet less way, he'd be, he'd be six point two five.
No, no.
You'd have lost. Man, if you zoom in, quarter foot.
I'll be point two five would be the variance, is what I'm saying, point two five, you're saying point seven five.
If you zoom in. Yeah.
Correct. Correct.
Man, zoom, zoom in, and there's actually a dimension between the width of the driveway shown and the property line. Scroll down a little bit and zoom in, it's four feet, eight inches.
You might, you might wanna bring up the survey.
Put it here, it's on the first page of the survey.
Twelve point seven two, right. To the existing driveway.
Oh, wait, no, that's.
There you go.
I think it's twelve point seven.
Oh, no, no, that's to the house.
Yeah, plus three is seven point seven five, they'd be needing a point two five.
Exactly.
I, I see it as point two five.
Correct, me too.
I agree.
So it would be.
It's not gonna be four point seven five feet, it's gonna be seven point seven five feet away from property line.
If you took.
Correct.
If you took point two five, you wouldn't need a variance at all, right, they could just do this.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
Well.
But is that enough space for them to?
You can't go out to twenty feet though, I mean, the parking area is, can be twelve by eighteen feet.
Well, we're talking about it, okay?
Yeah.
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 It eliminates the curb cut variance and point two five feet variance for the property line, which is pretty close to nothing. Do they need a variance for that?
They need, they need zero point two five feet.
Variance?
From the side property line.
Would that accomplish what you guys need?
Could you just, just tell me one more time?
Yeah.
It's. So, well, describe it based on the building, so if you're going from the garage toward the road twenty feet.
Okay.
The, the increased, the total new width of your driveway, existing and new, is eighteen feet.
Okay.
Which is what you need for two cars.
Which is, which is, meets the standard for two cars.
The curb cut's not eighteen feet.
Right.
The curb now is eighteen feet, yes. Turnaround turn around is eighteen feet, yes.
So it, yeah, so your, your curb cut would be unaffected.
Yep.
And.
Nowhere.
So we could, we could keep it at thirteen?
The curb cut would stay at thirteen, correct.
Yes.
Correct.
Exactly.
You should need to talk to your paving company.
Okay.
And this actually probably save you money too.
Well, less, yeah, less money.
I mean, I don't see.
You're gonna keep the driveway as it is and then do the turnaround area.
Your paving company, but it's not paving.
Okay.
And you're gonna be seven point seven five feet from your property line, so what the board's gonna consider is a zero point two five foot variance.
Okay.
For, uh, have that turnaround, seven point seven five feet from your property line.
Okay, so we gotta come back with those drawings?
No, no, just work with our office, so the board's gonna consider it, then you can work with Sharon, and we'll figure it all out after. We'll figure out the details after, if you have questions, just call us, we'll, we'll, we'll help.
I see. Okay.
So, so, so what's pause for say though, because I think, again, we should zoom out and talk about precedent here. I don't know whether or not, I think if we can get to a solution that avoids them needing any variances, it's better for precedent. Because even if it's only four inches here, or three inches, point two five feet, like, do we wanna get, like, for the sake of the record to getting to a point where we're approving variances?
You could say keep the driveway as it is and then have a turnaround go, have the turnaround go to eight feet away.
That's what I'm saying, it's a difference of four inches, let's just.
Or you can go up to eight feet. And then you won't have to do, we won't need any variance.
Yeah. Yeah, and then we're not establishing.
And you don't need us at all.
Prescedent, and then, yeah, and then you don't need us at all.
We can refund your application fee, right?
And it goes away.
Um, I don't know if we can once.
I don't know about that.
It points it to before the board, it's figured here, yeah.
That's not official.
So, could you just explain that to me now?
So, so after all this, after all this discussion, you had requested a variance for extended curb cut from your thirteen to twenty-one feet. You don't have to do anything with your curb cut now, just keep it the way it is, you don't need a variance. And then you're gonna use the existing driveway and go up to twenty feet from your house here, and you're gonna bring it out eight feet from your neighbor's property line.
Okay.
And that can go all the way up to your garage there.
Okay.
And then you won't need a variance for that either.
So it's instead of a, it's a seventeen and
Wait, wait, wait.
Seven five?
Foot nine inch wide driveway.
Yeah. Yes, and we can, we can confirm that with a map, because you need, you need no variance, and we don't have to get any variance now, you can confirm that with our planning and zoning department.
Right. For a slight reduction to your driveway.
As long as it's over into the.
You're adding four point nine inches in depth, in width. Right?
For a total width?
Should I reach out to Sharon and confirm that she knows that we dropped?
You could try, but I'm sure they're going to uh, realize, um, the tech is out.
We're up next, so I hope they don't say our names and then skip us.
Yeah, I know.
Might be a problem with your recording specifically. Just so you know, as you saw, so.
Right, well, thanks again.
Any questions, just call us.
Appreciate your time.
Next up is Tech Back LLC, is there someone here for that?
Yes, hi, we're on Zoom.
Oh, hi, are you Sasha?
Hi, yes, I'm Sasha, hi Sharon, hi everyone.
Let me get you. Hi Sasha, give me one second here, is there anyone in the audience here interested in this application, six four six four Ridings Road? Sasha, do you agree to waive reading of the notice?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Um, give me one second here Sasha, and I'll, you can get started.
Sure.
Um, uh, for the purposes of seeker, the town is declaring lead agency, uh, for purposes of seeker, this is an unlisted action for a commercial specific use permit or no environmental impacts associated with this action. And, uh, go ahead whenever you're ready, Sasha.
Thank you so much, uh, may I have permission to share my screen?
Um, yes. Yes, give me one second here.
Okay, no problem.
As I get all my stuff back on, one second.
We just had a power.
We had a power outage Sasha right before you, so.
Yeah, I know, we were freaking out here because you disappeared. I, Sharon's gonna have a frantic email from me of like, hey, do you guys know we're not there?
I just wanna get your documents out for the board to look at, give me a second here.
While he's doing that, I noticed one. While he's doing that, I noticed one of the documents was a July tenth board recommendation.
Yeah.
Could you summarize that for us?
Me?
Or someone?
It's up.
How?
Oh, one second Sasha, let me pull it up.
Oh, sorry.
Damn, it should be there. Yeah, here it is.
I got it, yeah.
So it's the planning board.
This is the planning board recommendation.
Do you want her to, I can talk about this, do you want her to kind of describe?
Yeah, why don't you show the project first, I'm busy, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes. Yeah. Yes. Let me share screen once I figure this out here.
Man, under share, then arrow next to it, down at the bottom, did read one.
I just got my eyes.
Yeah, right there. The second one.
Are you there?
Yeah. You should be okay now.
Okay, wonderful, it's working.
Wow, nice.
Okay, tech success?
Yes, we can see it.
Great, thank you, thank you. Um, so my name is Sasha, I'm here to speak about Tech Back and request that specific use permit per town code. Um, so I've put together a quick five minute presentation that will tell you who we are, what we do, and overview of our facilities and how we use them, and then can answer any additional questions that may come up as I'm talking. So at our core, we help small businesses and individuals responsibly part with their outdated electronics. So when I, when you hear that we're like a certified electronics recycler, like a certain industrial picture may come to mind, but our role is is not like that. We're a middleman facilitator. So we don't accept any hazardous materials. There's no items containing mercury or freon or loose lithium ion batteries on site. There's no smelting or like transformation of products, it's just light dismantling and mostly sorting. There's no noise, emissions, heavy machinery, we're like a quiet indoor operation. And we are definitely not a dump or a collection site. We are a high-touch upstream recycler, like. So as a certified upstream recycler, we operate more like a tech company, not a junkyard. So we help businesses, so like schools, medical and government offices, legal offices, nonprofits, all of those people, we just help them responsibly and securely, let go of their outdated tech, often at no cost to them. So how this works is, first, we pick up electronics from local businesses, and we handle everything on their site, from packing to transport. And we then bring it to our facility, and that's when we perform HIPAA compliant certified data destruction, and this is happening at the industry's highest standards. So this data destruction is really the heart of our business. Um, any items that we pick up that cannot be given a second life, those are lightly dismantled and sorted by type. And then they're safely sent outside of Onondaga County to R two certified downstream recyclers for actual breakdown. So downstream recyclers are where the actual recycling actually happens. Um, so our role is keeping electronics out of landfills and also just supporting a circular local economy. So our main service is everything I just described, working directly with local businesses. We do offer a limited public drop off option, and this is for individuals or business clients who just don't meet our free pickup minimums. So it's a smaller controlled part of our business, and it's designed to be clean, monitored, and non-disruptive. So drop off is available during limited business hours, it's never overnight, never without staff. We provide monitored temporary drop off bins that are rotated hourly, and next to those are two reserved parking spaces. Um, if someone has questions or needs help, they're welcome to also come inside and drop, like drop items off inside of our lobby, and that would be with staff assistance. So at three P M, uh, all bins are removed and locked away. We have clear signage, and it states that drop off is no longer permitted. We have full floodlight coverage at night and twenty four seven security camera monitoring of the site, which brings us to the next section, uh, the final section, which is our facilities. So Tech Back is located at sixty four sixty four Ridings Road. We're one minute from GM Circle just to orient you, and we're within a designated industrial zone. And we picked the site specifically for its easy access to those business pickups. So we share our business, I mean, sorry, we don't share our business, but we share our building with three other tenants. So our unit is located at the rear, and we face inward toward the parking lot, not the street. I've added a color overlay, so you can see which set of the building we leave. Um, so this is Ridings Road where the customers enter, and the building has forty five parking spots total. And two of those, the ones I'm just making green now, are reserved for client drop off. Um, based on comparative companies, we expect no more than one customer at a time, and Tech Back will use seven of the spots total, including all the employees and all the customers. Um, so in front of those two dedicated parking spots, I'll go back and forth so it blinks a little, it's to scale, so it's tiny, but we'll have those two, uh, drop off bins during our set hours. And I've added them to scale, so they they are tiny. So this is a, this is what the bins look like, they're four feet by three feet in width, and they're in the rear of the building. Here's a mockup of our drop off bins when you view it from the rear parking lot. So they're over on the left side, and as you can see, they're orderly and non-disruptive, and you know, someone's there and switching them out hourly. Uh, at the side of this building is our lobby that I mentioned earlier for the customers and clients who need extra assistance. And then out of sight at the rear of the building are those two secure staff entrances you saw in the mockup of the bins, and that's where the bins are monitored and swapped, and that's where all the business pickups are brought inside. So just to kind of ground you, this is the view from the street. For any drop offs, pickups are totally out of sight. Um, this is not our front entrance, this is actually Pharmalogix, our co-tenant, we're like in the back. So if you try to see us, you can't really, unfortunately, unfortunate for us. Um, but here's the most extreme view from the street. Um, and you can see that's our front entrance for reference, while the drop offs and pickups are happening like behind that. Um, so a large part of our business, like I mentioned earlier, is handling our clients' secure data. So we take onsite security very seriously. We have six high resolution cameras that monitor all activity on site at all hours of the day, and floodlights already surround the building, so there's no visibility loss overnight. Uh, the reason for that is because our largest co-tenant Pharmalogix, who's in the front of the building, they actually work on an opposite schedule. They're onsite overnight, making recreation drinks for local hospitals, and so they're using the back lot overnight, so we're never vulnerable to damage after hours. Sorry. A lot of noise all of a sudden.
That's not, that's not all right, sorry Sasha.
I was like, you guys okay? Okay, okay, um, anyways, so in closing, thank you, sorry for the pause. So we've really, you know, we've really taken care here to make this a low impact, well managed, light industrial operation. Obviously, the environment is our our passion, so being kind to it is very important to us. So we really fit seamlessly into our industrial zone neighborhood, and we look forward to being a good neighbor and a responsible tenant into it. Um, as a secure state certified data destruction partner, we really hope to be a valuable asset to the small business community here and have a positive impact on our local environment. So that's it, thank you so much for your time and support, and hopefully granting our specific use permit. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions that arose as I was speaking through all of that.
Okay, so my my question is about the recommendation from the board last week. It's got other requirements. I think you had on some of them in your speech, like for example, no outdoor storage.
Yep.
Um, the bins are stored maybe three foot by four feet at the times when they're available. So if we were to put those in the, as conditions of the variance.
A specific use permit.
Yeah, a specific use permit, the applicant would agree with that, right?
Uh, yeah, definitely, we would agree with it. The one thing they did is that we set our hours from eight AM to three PM, and we requested that the board just put business hours, I think they put seven AM to five PM, just so that we had wiggle room in case we end up wanting to, you know, shift our hours by thirty minutes one way or the other way, we wouldn't have to come back to the board.
We have the bins out eight AM to five PM, it looks like.
Okay.
That's what this says.
Got it, got it, okay.
Is that okay?
Um, that would be fine, I mean, I would prefer seven AM just so that anyone can drop off on their way to work, but you know, I it's I it's not the end of the world for us. Like I said, it's a small part of our business, I just wanna make it convenient for the people who need it.
Just for the board's knowledge, what we're here to do is the planning and zoning department to judge this business type to be closest to this specific permit use, um, in the industrial zone. That use. Um, what is that?
It's disposal, storage, or processing of toxic waste, medical waste, garbage, or other refuse or waste products of every kind of nature. Sounds like the closest category we could find, there really wasn't something that they fit in there.
Sounds a little bit more threatening than I think what.
Yeah.
They're actually.
It's a long, it's a, that sounds really scary, it's nothing like.
So it's you, that is really just, um, this this says for that use, there needs to be a specific permit. So the planning board heard it, they recommended that we issue this specific use permit.
Yeah.
And like Dan said, okay, any conditions is up.
Now if we.
And then the the no signage was put in there, because they don't require a site plan.
Yes.
Right now, they're not proposing any exterior changes. But it is a multi-tenant building, so if they want signage, they need a multi-tenant signed plan, which is a site plan. So.
So if we do issue the special, um, permit, but give them the additional hour, so it's seven AM to five PM, do they then need to go back to the planning board?
Think so, because the planning board just makes recommendations.
Have to have to, it would just. Yeah, you would just be going slightly off of what the planning board recommended.
Yeah, that wasn't discussed at the planning board meeting, we discussed moving hours later, but I don't think there was discussion of moving hours earlier.
There wasn't discussion, we absolutely can't have this be seven AM, or I don't like that.
I don't, I don't remember discussing hours at all, we discussed it.
No, it didn't come up, it happened really quick, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I I mean, as somebody who starts working at eight, I would like it personally, if they were open at seven, you drop off on the way to work.
Yeah, the planning board didn't discuss that, because this isn't a site plan before the planning board, the planning board basically just makes a recommendation to the Z B A on the special use permit, but it doesn't go back to the planning board.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the special use permit, um, with the one, two, three, four conditions outlined in the recommendation from the planning board.
Mm-hmm.
Except that the bins may put out, be put out from seven AM, and remove and brought indoors by five PM today.
Seven. Seven AM to five PM, correct?
Yep.
These are the bins.
Everything else is part of the planning board recommendation layer.
Motion made by Max, second by Jamie, hear that? Motion by Max, second by Jamie to approve a specific use permit with the four conditions outlined in the planning board recommendation, except for the condition, um, the zoning board is going to allow the hours to be seven AM to five PM for use of the temporary bins.
Do we have to go through the criteria?
Yes, so I will do that now. Is the proposed use appropriate for the particular lot and location?
Yes.
Yes.
Primarily an industrial area, um, out here, um, engaged in recycling of industrialesque materials.
Is the proposed use unreasonably detrimental to neighboring properties, areas, districts?
It's not detrimental at all, it's a good use of the facility.
Is the proposed use consistent with an orderly and appropriate development of neighboring properties, areas, and districts?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Where joined by existing and permitted uses, is the proposed use suitable transition between neighboring properties, areas, and districts?
Yes.
It's fine, same question. Is the proposed use the appropriate evolution of the comprehensive plan for the town to win?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion made by.
So I'm so I'm so sorry, now that I made the motion, I have a follow up question.
No, no worries.
Um, Sasha, would you mind bringing up the, um, the site plan again that shows the locations of the bins and the location of the designated parking spots?
Sure.
My question pertains to ADA access to the building. And just ensuring there's an accessible path from the designated ADA spots to the entrance of your building.
So, yes, the two reserved spots are the green spots, and then the two blue things are the bins, and then that gray area is the is the sidewalk in front of you.
Would you mind sharing again?
About to share the screen.
Oh, oh, am I not sharing, oh, I'm so embarrassed.
Oh, I know.
It might have been my fault though, I don't, oh, there we go, okay.
I'm only looking at the Google Earth view. It doesn't appear there's a sidewalk running along that side of the building, right?
Uh, in the in the rear of the building, you're saying?
Right.
Correct, no, there's no sidewalk. The sidewalk, mm-hmm.
Sorry. The primary entrance is to the the blue box we see?
Mm-hmm.
The blue box is our lobby, so that is where someone could enter on the sidewalk to come inside and drop items inside.
So the bins will never be in the way of someone traveling between the primary entrance to your lobby and the ADA parking spots?
Oh, no, absolutely not, no.
Okay.
Yeah, because they, I mean, on our end, like, they have to be near the entrance to roll them in and out of our facilities, so they are not going through the lobby.
Sorry, I'll just make sure they weren't in the way of somebody, say, in a wheelchair from that spot to the front entry, and it doesn't appear they are.
Oh, yeah, no. No, no, it's absolutely, no, it's absolutely for all all people maxed out.
Okay, sorry for the diversion, you stand by your, you stand by your motion?
I stand by my motion, yep. Just wanted to know.
You got a motion made by.
It's a good reason to double check.
Motion made by Max, second by Jamie to approve a specific use permit with the four conditions outlined in the planning board recommendation, except for the hours for the temporary bins can be from seven AM to five PM. Call for a vote, member Pascal?
Approve.
Member Perrin?
Yes.
Member Trevette?
Approve.
Uh, by, uh, by Sherry Cornfield?
Yes.
Congratulations Sasha, you passed.
Thank you so much, everyone, and we really do hope to be open early September, end of August. Please bring your electronics, don't put them in landfills, we'll protect them. If you have sick, any data, we'll safely wipe it. Um, we're so excited to be part of the community, so thank you so much.
Thank you Sasha.
Sasha, and Sasha, if you wanna do signage, just give our office a call, and we'll get that process started.
For sure, we have not heard promising things about this whole multi-tenant.
Oh, yeah, it's super fun.
We're a little stressed.
No, it's not that bad, we can walk you through it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Bye, everyone.
Goodbye.
The next application is for one oh six Lindbrook Circle. Is someone here for this application?
Hello, is there anybody else here interested in this application of one oh six Lindbrook? Do you agree to waive reading of the notice?
Certainly.
Thank you very much. Before you get started, the town is declaring lead agency for purposes of SEER. It's a type two action for an area variance for a single family, two family, or three family residence. There are no negative environment, environmental impacts associated with the proposed action. Whenever you're ready, let me pull up your, um.
The drawings.
Let me pull up your information here. Is this for the front yard setback?
Yes, yes. But it's already called.
So I'm Michael Garrity, the architect, representing Anna Dots, the owner. And we would like to build a screen porch on the front of our home as the entry point, and, uh, I've prepared a number of different site plans. I included a plan for the whole cul-de-sac, so this is her property itself, her house.
Sorry, I'll get a little closer.
And you can see her front yard is eroded by the curve of the cul-de-sac. If we can go to one of those plans with of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Here we go.
That's it?
Yeah.
Scroll over here.
Yes. You can see that the adjacent property is along Lindcourt. The green line is the established setback. And our new front porch would be well in back of that within this established setback. This magenta line is the ordinance setback, and you can see that none of the houses on that side of the street meet the current ordinance. Um, it's only when we take into account the curve of the cul-de-sac that you can see most of that corner of our house is inside the ordinance. But well back, if we just continued the distance around the curve of the cul-de-sac, we have a partial intrusion there, but from the actual property line, you can see where we have a unique spot. A risk risk for the variance.
I thought, as a twenty, the front yard setback will be ten feet, is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
So I have a a sheet of of photos of the cul-de-sac of the property. There's a line of our providing.
Some of the old builds.
Yeah, you can see her front porch would be set way back in there and would not be really visible. This is a rendering of what it might look like from down.
The edge of the cul-de-sac here, we're just looking there, right, just that.
Yeah, it continues past that car further. Hey, Matt, can you?
So at the test bar, where it said, yeah, go all the way to the right, hit the two Chevron arrows, yeah?
Okay.
And then go down to presentation mode?
Why didn't you ever do this before?
Well, you never looked at posted stand side photos, you can't see.
I guess I'm just trying my best there.
Yeah, this is a photo from like back here, of that whole, I think, of the cul-de-sac. Our house is not visible. It's set behind the screen of trees. So our front porch is not going to be any kind of visual detriment, and if it were a straight street, it would be well within the established setback.
And so the curvature of the road and the cul-de-sac necessitates a larger variance then, it it appears to be.
Correct. Yes.
Got it.
Questions? It seems like there's already a step. Is it gonna match the same footprint as this?
No, we're making it bigger than the step so that. And the reason to make it a screen porch is so that you can have a couple of chairs and sit out there on nice evenings with neighbors.
Would any of those trees be coming down in the front of the house?
No. No.
Questions? Any other questions? Comments? Motions?
The entirety of the whole thing would be okay, technically.
What's that?
So they need a full, full depth.
Not full. The, the setback is thirty-five feet required. They are looking for ten feet, so the, the variance would be twenty-five feet.
Which is significant. I think we should.
Which is significant.
A lot of conditions that are.
Which is significant, offset by some of the factors that Mr. Derr is talking about here.
Right.
Max, welcome to craft another motion now.
Uh huh.
That's a problem.
It's Jamie's turn. He's the architect.
What kind of conditions are you thinking about, Jamie?
Uh.
So any of that, it would still.
Well.
What would be, what would be the need for conditions?
I don't think there's a great deal. Honestly, it, obviously, um I can go through the requirements.
Well, so, so Dan's favorite question is always, are there alternatives? So I think we could at least talk about that for a minute. I mean, I'm assuming you're limited by, the depth is sort of dependent on your ability to have a couple of chairs. Um and even if you were to make the porch wider but more shallow, you're still gonna need a variance.
Correct.
Yeah, right. So it really doesn't gain a whole lot by trying to talk about modifying the layout of the porch.
Right. They're not proposing some massive, out of the ordinary, uh, area.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
It is consistent with the rest of the house, too.
The porch is almost nine feet square.
It looks taller than the house.
It is.
But if you look at the back, it's also got parts that are a little bit bigger.
I mean, it looks nice.
And you're not proposing to take down any trees. It's really.
Correct.
You could put that as a condition.
Still not really. Why is it visible from the screen?
We don't know if we can tell them they can never cut down a tree.
That's a little tough.
Yeah, like what if it gets struck by lightning? They can't then cut it down if it's broken? Like, I don't know.
Is there?
Oh, they can. That's a public safety.
Is there any letters from the neighbors? Any comments? Or I don't see that in here.
Anything from the neighbors?
Perfect.
No positive or negative.
It just means they don't know about it.
Hey, we noticed. Everyone's noticed. All the neighbors got the notice. Or people that are against them, they usually show it. I know.
No, I'm, I'll make a motion to approve. I just think when we go through the criteria, we should include a lot to explain what he's just gonna.
Yes, no, exactly. Well, it's unusual.
Cause it is significant.
All right, I've got a motion made by Max to grant area variance of twenty-five feet or front yard setback of ten feet. Go ahead, a second?
A second. I would.
Second by Jamie.
Jamie, a second.
Let's talk about the criteria. Will there be an undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties created by granting variance?
No, because several of the properties are already in the setback lanes.
Setback.
And because the curvature of the cul-de-sac makes this a unique situation.
Right, and their setback will be in line with that of the neighbors. Visually, if you're looking down the street, it'll be in line with, with the neighbors.
Can the bene, can the benefit sought by the applicant be achieved by some other feasible method for the applicant to pursue other than the neighboring variance? If they want to transport, right? Is the requested variance substantial?
Yes.
Yes.
However, because of the unusual nature of the lot.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a pretty, it's a situation.
It's a little bit.
Will the proposed variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighboring district?
Yeah.
Is the light difficult to be self-created?
Yes.
Yes.
Got a motion made by Max. To grant an area variance of twenty-five feet or front yard setback of ten feet, seconded by Jamie. Call for a vote. Member Pascal?
Yes.
Is it member Perrin?
Yes.
Or Trevette?
Yes.
Member Cornfeld?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Or out. Have a great night.
Thank you. You too.
We're still generating, Jamie?
Yes, that's why there's no. I was gonna say. I don't think there's ever.
Yeah, it's been here and here for.
Yeah.
All right, sorry. That's why I threw my clothes.
Why? Oh, it hasn't been in a month?
That's as they may as long as.
Do you remember the last meeting we held last week?
Oh, oh, crazy.
Yeah.
It was. I just blocked it out, I guess. I thought it didn't kick back on.
My husband's.
It's all.
It's all.
It's all on my.
So the next application is from Verizon. I think we're gonna talk about a tower. Is there someone here to speak about that application?
There's several people, yes.
I'm going to read the notice. There are people in the audience for this?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Make sure we know the right notice here.
Here we are.
Notice is hereby given pursuant to section two sixty-seven A of the New York State Town Law. That a public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals of the town of Duett, New York. The town offices fifty-four hundred Butternut Drive, Syracuse, New York, on Monday, July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, six fifty P M. To consider the application of Teleplanic Global Systems LLC, DBA Verizon, received by the Duett Town Clerk on June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, concerning the premises situated at six eight four five Edinger Drive, tax map parcel ID zero seven seven zero six one four one. Uh Jamesville, Duett Central School District, owner and residential zero zoning district. Specific relief requested by the applicant is issuance of a specific use permit to allow for implementation with telecommunications tower or antenna within seven hundred and fifty feet or in a residential zoning district. And for such additional relief as may be necessary or appropriate, this was published in the paper, July eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
Is there someone here from Verizon? Did you go first?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jared Lusk with.
Hey Jared, before you get started, I'm gonna do my seeker spiel. Um the town is declaring lead agency for purposes of seeker. This is an unlisted action for a commercial specific use permit, and there are no environmental impacts associated with this action. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jared Lusk with uh law firm Dixon Peabody. As you, I believe you are aware, we originally applied to the town or to the planning board and the zoning board of appeals on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five uh to construct a hundred and twenty-foot wireless telecommunications facility at sixty-eight uh forty-five Edinger Drive, which is essentially in the parking area adjacent to the school district bus garage. Before the planning board, we went through a long process of uh of describing, well, describing the need for the project uh and the, the planning board routine, uh wireless telecommunications consultant consultants by the name of William Johnson and Stephen Ciccarelli, who worked with the planning board to um review the application materials and provide uh comment on both uh the location of and the, of the tower and the height of the tower. That culminated in their report on July second uh in our appearance uh at the, the last planning board meeting. Which uh as part of that process, Verizon agreed uh to reduce the, the height of the tower from uh a hundred and twenty feet down to a hundred feet. And in, in doing so, eliminating the need for a height variance. So the uh original, the original proposal for a hundred and twenty feet would have required a height variance. So that, that variance was eliminated by Verizon's agreement, uh agreement to reduce the, the tower down to a hundred feet. The project's located in the residential zero zoning district, as you stated. It requires, uh now requires the special exception use permit from the planning board, as well as site plan approval from the uh planning board. I, I don't know if Alana wants to describe, I, I, I don't wanna speak for the planning board. They issued a recommendation based on, you know, at the last meeting with um with uh Professor Johnson on, on the line uh and, and recommended uh approval of the site as, as proposed at a hundred, as, as amended, I guess, at a hundred feet. I don't want to, if you would like me to rehash that process, if there's anything else I should add to that. It was over several months.
It was over several months, yes, and we did have an expert um and interrupt me if I say anything wrong, but basically the way this works is once Verizon is able to prove that they need a tower in this location because of capacity issues, um it becomes quasi utility and we can't deny it necessarily. They have to show that they're providing like the least intrusive um option to the neighbors and the surrounding area. Um so instead of doing a tower, another option might have been several smaller towers, you know, in surrounding neighborhoods, which we didn't think would be desirable because it's all residential around there. Um so the expert was able to show that by reducing it from one hundred and twenty feet to one hundred feet, it didn't make a huge difference. The, the only difference is really there's a, like a dead zone on Woodchuck Hill Road and that would not cover as much of that by reducing the height. Um but it, it wasn't a huge difference, so.
Their radius for Verizon saying if the tower's gotta go somewhere in this radius.
Could, or a mile or something.
It's, 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 it's provided in the uh.
But it still wouldn't fix the wood, woodchuck.
No, even if it was a hundred and twenty feet.
Like how far, like how, how far do you look? I mean, I mean.
Even if it's a hundred and twenty feet, it would fix completely.
Uh, if uh, if uh, if you look at it in, in tab um tab H of the application.
It's got a lot of.
It's gonna be in exhibits new through C C.
Yeah, it's got a lot of. Does it not, on the height of the tower?
I'm sorry.
Do you got the radius depend on the height of the tower?
No, it's, it's driven by the location where it needs to be. And again, the search area was depicted. You're asking the question about where it is. It's, it's basically in the area of the school and the surrounding area. We, we went through an extensive uh site selection process and I, and I know uh in, in my first conversation with Alana, she said, is there someplace that you could put it um particularly on the quarry, the quarry property next door, which would, would have, or I'm sorry, the, the, the more it's not the quarry property. It's, you did mention the quarry that's to the south. Uh there, there was an additional piece of property that's, that's uh, that's undeveloped next to the school and as outlined in our application, uh that is uh under a deed restriction that uh prevents any, any projects uh be constructed on it. So it's prohibited from uh being constructed on it. So the only, only properties that were available to uh, to uh construct this would have been residential lots themselves or the school district property, with the exception of one, which is the town, all, town of Duett owns a water tank immediately adjacent to the bus garage. We uh talked, discussed uh uh erecting a tower leasing from the town. The problem is the, the parcel that the, that the water tower sits on is too small. Can't, and, and the water tower is too short to, shall we say, co-locate on. So uh in essence, the uh, the school district property is the only place uh aside from residential lots, that we could place the tower within the search area that uh necessary to kill or to uh uh serve the, the dead zone that is, is in that area. That was well documented. At the first planning board public hearing, I wasn't there. I did uh review it. There were people that were opposed, but it's, it's, it's un, it's uncommon for people to come into a, a meeting. Someone said today, people that generally are in favor of it do not come. There were people that came to the meeting and said, we really need, and I think people uh in speaking to the school district and the prior superintendent, uh there's a, there is a real uh need for coverage uh wireless telecommunications coverage in the, in the area of the school for public safety and other reasons. I can tell you that we have been uh in search, working on this site, both with the town and the school district since before COVID. So this is a five-year process. This is the only uh trust me when I tell you that it took so long, cause this is the only place that we, that was available for us to place the tower. So um to say the least intrusive means it must be true, cause it is the only place that it, it can go to serve the need.
Um the planning board looked at a couple of different things. One was trying to move the tower closer to the trees on the property. Can you connect explorers?
I'd not block any of those views.
Do you want me to pause it on the school property?
Yes, I don't, sorry, I'm gonna.
We did, we did revise the project in, in, in response to the planning board. We did push it, push the tower uh about fifteen feet north and, and west, and we, we've made some change, some site, what I would say, site plan related changes to the site in an effort uh to improve it, uh change the uh, change the fencing uh design at the request of the planning board, added more landscaping. So again, I believe those are, those are, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe those are more site plan related, but again, we went through those comments and responded to each and every one and made the changes that the planning board had, had recommended.
Zoom out a little, it's easier to connect. So first time.
I went to school here and I still don't recognize where I am.
Just zoom out.
Oh, I zoom out. Yeah, yeah.
Just use your roller on the ups.
Oh.
Oh.
Oh, to the uh, the new gym. Oh, the new gym twenty years ago.
Yeah, on the other end.
Yeah, so go down.
Is it the school? We're going over here, right?
Down. The side, go the other way.
No, 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 no.
By the bus garage. Keep going.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, I.
Yeah, then keep going. Keep going.
Yeah.
Definitely, we've, okay.
Yeah, the town is like there.
It's far away.
There's the water tank.
Ah.
Very, very close one.
Yeah.
And there's the water tower here.
Yeah, so one of the things the planning board had asked was if they can move the tower closer to the trees, kind of like up to the right um on this photo, but the school didn't wanna move it closer to there because there's a cross-country uh trail that comes out there. Um.
So where is it gonna be?
Is it really close?
Oh, where the right?
Jared, you're not pointing exactly where.
With, oh, I don't know.
Uh it's, it's in, in this, the city right here.
There the tower.
Right, right near the tower, the other one. There's an issue, there's an issue here that the school, in our first, this has gone through a number of iterations, so I, I don't wanna over uh overstate it. I know people are looking at the screen, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna block people who are looking, but um we moved it to the north as much as we could, staying on the property. Again, there was not just the country, um the, the cross-country trail. By moving it up to the north, uh the tower then went immediately adjacent to the playing field and I, I, I think the old superintendent disguised it. That becomes more of a, a nuisance to the children that are now immediately adjacent to the tower and creates uh uh, shall we say, an attractive nuisance for them. So le, leaving it down here by the school buses, the kids generally are not uh in, in, in that vicinity. Uh and so we, we placed it up there, uh again, inside a fenced area uh adjacent to the tower. If some, we can pull up the site plan, you can see it. Get the, the real details.
Through here, exhibit B.
Yes.
And it is exhibit uh Y.
That's why it was taking so long to scroll. See the hard copy out there.
When I said that, did I do that?
No, no, I'm just saying, it's all that.
Uh, that's all the stuff.
It is in the record. It's just taken, okay. What exhibit am I going to?
Y. Exhibit Y. In uh, yep, there you go. It'll be the plan if you keep scrolling. If you're able to scroll down, you'll see there's an aerial.
Over.
I think.
Over there?
Yep, right there. So you can see here's the, now this is twisted, right? Oh, um this is the reverse of the Google Earth. Remember this was up here. So you can see it's, it, the tower is right here. And so uh the, that, uh as we started this process, uh the school district informed us after the fact that they, there were potentially future plans for an additional forty by one hundred pole barn. So that necessitated us both the school district or the comments in the planning board and reserving the space and giving sufficient access, we needed to just tweak it. It was not much, it was fifteen or twenty feet in each direction. And again, um is, can we go to the landscaping uh plan now? All right, so this is the, the compound plan. You can see.
I'm sorry if I'm passing it.
So we, uh at the request of the planning board, we added additional landscaping here and here, and those are the, and when you look at the simulations of the tower, those are the areas that are visible at ground uh level. Uh both, this is internal to the school, but in this area here that, that, when we looked at the simulations, when we flew the, the balloon, this area just was, there was, I wanna call it, uh, I don't mean to be disrespectful, sort of scrub brush. I don't know any other way to describe it. Wild bushes area. You could see, clearly see the fence, so we've planted some trees uh for the, 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 the school barn, and this provides a little, uh provides additional screening. Obviously, it's not gonna screen uh the, 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 the top of the tower, but it will screen the um, the, the base and mitigate the view of the compound, which again, wasn't particularly visible, but and again, and then the, the planning board requests us to put in a different fence than what was proposed. Um and uh and it was similar, I'm sorry, what was the same project that was used?
Uh, for national grid.
Yeah, for na, for national grid. So they, they wanted that fence used for our facility as well. So those were the, the substantive changes of the project through the planning board, reducing the height, moving it about fifteen feet north and I think twelve feet west, uh don't, something, uh a, a minor adjustment to accommodate the barn and uh the, the barn construction for the, for the school district.
Fence is like a decorative aluminum, like security fence. It like goes out at the top. They were proposing chain link with slats through it, which the planning board was not in favor of. Couple other things I wanna mention. Um, a couple of other things I wanna mention, we did receive a petition from about fifty residents in opposition to the project. Um, some of the things that were mentioned had to deal with the radio frequency concerns. But that's not something we're allowed to comment on. If they can show that they're meeting the FCC regulations, then that's not something we can do anything about.
And as we provided on our, on our last meeting, the FCC has provided a limitation and and they've provided a certification from an engineer that uh, from a third-party engineer that our facility, once operating, will will be operating at point four nine percent, half of one percent of the federal limit.
Um, Verizon is also allowed.
Say that again, half of a percent.
Yes, less than one percent of the federal limit.
Verizon is also allowed by right, um, say, they put the tower up at a hundred feet, they can come back and say, this tower isn't serving our needs. They're able to increase it twenty more feet without having to come to the town for approval. So if the tower had originally been one hundred twenty feet, they could have raised it to one hundred forty feet without the town being involved. Um, you know, they were able to get it down to a hundred feet, so they can raise it up to a hundred twenty feet, um, if they can show that that's required.
Not, not, not to quibble with you, the the law doesn't say we don't have to come back to the town. What it says is, we you, we, if we meet that standard twenty feet, we, you must approve it and you can't deny it. So we can still go through a process. Most municipalities are turning that into a building permit process because why would you come before the board if you had no power to deny it? But that was established by Congress in twenty twelve.
So are there members of the audience who'd like to comment on the petition?
Yeah, sure.
Say your name and the address for the record, please.
You know, I'd like to remain, remain, uh, remain anonymous because I've been involved in one of these things in the past and I've been brought to a lawsuit. So I'd like not to surrender my fourth.
I'm not looking at.
I'm just saying.
Do anything like that.
Yeah, I'd rather not, so.
Okay.
Um, so I have a lot more than five years and uh probably maybe more money invested in my property, so don't go go too far opposing. Um, and uh, you know, uh, I think what he said about people not coming here means that they are for this project. That's not true, and she's proved that. And there were several people on my street that uh were opposed to this as well. Um, I have been up for forty-eight hours. Uh, I haven't put enough quarters in to get to eight o'clock, but I'm still here because nobody else could come. But they're all opposed to it on my street as well. And uh, you know, so I know we can't talk about health risks, but we can talk about public perception. And according to the data that I looked up and research uh that I um did, there were several uh studies done to show that uh property values decreased by twenty percent because of cell towers and uh public perception. So you all know how how much your property tax money, so we don't wanna do that. So, you know, uh, I think that's something to consider. You know, uh, what's this gonna cost the town? Probably figure about twenty percent less tax, property taxes, so. Uh, yeah, so uh uh, like I said, don't uh you know, I have, I have a lot of time and money invested in my property too as well as the other people. Now, I'm not as close to the towers, probably at least fifty people are, but you know, if you're, you got, she got fifty, probably say a hundred and fifty, two hundred people are opposed. That'd be my guess. Thank you.
Any, any other comment? Say your name for the record, please?
Um, Josh Hawn. Uh, I live on uh Page Hollow Place. Um, I have a cop, I don't know if it's the same petition.
Because of fifty-four names.
This has fifty-two on it, so I.
We can take it.
You submitted to, you submitted to the record.
Yeah.
You can, you can.
Good to you.
Uh, just leave it with Sharon.
Sure, alright. Um, again, significant concerns about the radiation exposure due to the proximity to the tower. Understand that you can't um consider that, but just, you know, like he was saying, the unsightliness of it, um, you know, I'm I'm adjacent to the bus garage, so, I mean, I'd see a hundred-foot tower in my backyard every, every day. Um, I really I don't see how that doesn't affect property values. I started reading through the six hundred and fifty-page document that states other, you know, otherwise, but that's a little hard to decipher. Um, but I, I can't see how it doesn't.
Well, there's been studies that show that it does, so I, I mean, I didn't, I can provide them, but I didn't, I didn't bring it up yet.
So is it fair to say you you consider it detrimental to the character of the neighborhood?
I do, yes. Thank you. Better way to say it. Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else?
I guess I'm in Solomon D'Or. Um, my name's Dean Roberts. I'm a um resident of Hana DeWitt. I live right in Holliston Circle. So you almost can see my backyard on that thing. I lived there thirteen years. Um, Holliston Circle has an email group for thirteen years. Everyone has complained about our cell service. I cannot get calls inside my house. There is a cardiac surgeon, there's a urologist, there is a radiologist. You wanna talk about someone getting hurt, talk about your surgeon not getting a call at night. We don't get service in our houses. And I have, my brothers complained, we, people have tried the boosters with Verizon, they've tried different services. We're in a dead zone literally every day. If I'm on my car, slow and driving into my neighborhood on Edinger, turn on the clonia, drop the call. Every day. So I don't even make a call when I leave my house. If I'm on my phone, I tell the people, I'll call you back when I get a maple. Because that's when I pick it back up. Number two, so that's a, a real risk is we not getting calls. And that's a real risk, and that's a real thing that does occur and that has been our problem, no matter what other options of cell phones provide. Wi-Fi calling, all that does not work. As for the risks, I, again, no one wants to talk about it, but just to throw this out there, my office on East Tennessee Street. I live, my office is directly next to Jewonio School, across the street from Nottingham, behind me is Elmcrest, H W Smith. They just put a huge hundred-foot cellphone tower there as well. So, I mean, if there really was risk, I think obviously there would be huge amount probably from the number of kids in that area. Um, but from a utility standpoint, I'm hugely in favor and hopefully this will get done soon, to be quite honest with you because I have had service in thirteen years and my value, if someone actually knew how bad of a service, they would be upset too. Thank you.
Thank you. May I, what they knew that when they bought the house.
I didn't know anything about my cell service until I lived there.
Just give them the same.
I'm just saying, they probably did.
Okay, so we're not gonna debate.
Can you comment directly at the board, please?
Well, okay, yeah, that wa- that was to the board.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything to say?
That was to the board.
Go ahead.
May I just introduce myself to the board? I'm Darcy Workack, the new superintendent for Jameson, that's.
Hi, Darcy.
Hi.
I've seen your name in the paper.
It's nice to be started. I just wanted to be here to listen and ensure that I offer some of the feedback.
Nice to meet you, Darcy.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any emotions, discussion, questions, concerns?
So it feels really funny to boil down five years of such a contentious issue and six hundred and fifty-page document into a thirty-minute discussion. Can, can, Alana, can you explain, so the, the, I'm particularly curious about the point you made about, once it's deemed a re- a utility, you can't say no. So has it not yet been, wh- whatever determination required?
Basically, if Verizon can show that they have a need for service there, then we have to provide the opportunity for something. I mean, it if it wasn't this tower, it might be smaller towers in surrounding neighborhoods, like in the residential neighborhoods, because there's no place else in this area that's it's all residential. So.
In some of the.
The services, the services need so much.
I'm not sure exactly how they would do it, but yeah, or some sort of small cell, I'm not sure what the alternatives, but if they can prove that they need something there, then
The government would recognize that's a, that's a significant interest, yes.
it would be difficult for, yeah.
But that hasn't officially happened.
Well, Verizon has shown that they have a need.
And the planning board, they did all this at the planning board. The planning board reviews it, they get an expert themselves, they go through everything, and then they make the recommendation to us. So we're only, we're here on a very narrow question, uh, whether to approve the tower in the residential zone. A lot of the other questions about it are flushed out at the planning board level.
Yeah, I mean, the planning board has been working with them to try to find the least intrusive means of doing this. Um, but if you look through the application, they have pages and pages showing all the surrounding towers and, you know, how they're already and Jared can talk about this a lot better than me, how they're over capacity or, you know, basically need to offload some service there.
So, as I understand it, I, I know very little about any of this technology. Are we moving to something like a five G? Is this like a five G tower?
Oh, four D, five D. Five D is this next, next technology. But we still retain four D, because not all phones, not all uh end-users have five G, fully five G capable phone cell.
So I, I thought, and I could be wrong, so correct me if I get this wrong. I thought that there were gonna be lots of little five G towers everywhere, rather than one big four G tower.
So that, it's kind of a, that's the way to put it. There's two, two to three different waves that we're going about it. One was small towers. What we're using, uh, those towers was what was called no meter wave, which is twenty-eight giga, giga hertz uh frequency. Little tiny things goes through nothing, so we're doing a lot of small towers. Not efficient, not good in areas with a lot of woods, like these, does, it doesn't penetrate buildings, it doesn't penetrate through leaves, it doesn't, so that kind of technology doesn't fit in these kind of areas. So our second wave, what we're doing now now is we've got the what we call C-band, which is in the three and a half gigahertz. Well, but but a better band can can get some penetration through leaves, through, so that's what these are. But these, we can just put on normal towers, do normal, you know, normal uh, normal deployment of.
So Verizon operates on on five, sometimes six separate frequencies. So when you talk about five G and C-band, that is just one of the four or five frequencies that your phone is operating on. So uh, and 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 you're, and the diff- and the ma- the machine and the network operates on does a variety of things on those different frequencies. So when you hear about five G or or uh C-band, that's just a frequency there's. There's the original eight hundred and fifty megahertz, or you look to be about my age, when we were kids and the big black uh phones, that was the first one, right? Little Omni and, or Omni antennas on top of towers, and they were in a field and they would go uh five or ten miles in each direction, right? Those were the first cell phones uh that were used. And then they got, those, those is uh, Alana indicated, each one of these frequencies can only oper- can only handle so many different uh uh calling event, uh, we call them events uh on the uh, on the network, right? And so more and more people got cell phones. So then they, they uh, they bought a second frequency from the FCC, nineteen hundred and fifty, and that's a higher frequency. The, the problem with the nineteen hundred and fifty frequency, it's a higher frequency, so the wave, instead of floating along the, the farm fields and going a far distance, went much shorter. So then we needed to have more towers to cover the same area because it's a higher frequency. Verizon has attempted it over the years to be really smart, saying, okay, if we're going, since we had a network that was eight hundred and fifty coverage and the nineteen hundred uh, coverage, they bought, they purchased frequencies that are very close to that, so they can add those antennas onto the same towers and goes roughly the same distance. So they now have seven hundred and they had twenty-one hundred. So if you can see nineteen fifty, twenty-one hundred, eight fifty, seven hundred megahertz. Uh, and some of those frequencies are the former anal- were the frequencies, the former analog TV, remember back when we were younger, when they, they went to digital TV. These are all the frequencies that the FCC auctioned off for billions of dollars. When you buy these frequencies, because these frequencies are uh owned by the, the government, um, you would, you commit to delivering that service towards a wider area as you, so so Verizon has bought this network for various places around the country, including Syracuse area. So it, it has to show that when it has these, the, the service that is, it's building out the network, so that it's, it's just not providing uh service to this area or that area, that it's, it's a global wide area. So you have the public safety concern, you want people to be able to make a call. Verizon has a license obligation to deliver a reliable service on all these frequencies to as much as it possibly can. Doesn't mean everybody's gonna get service, but they have to show what's happening.
I agree with all of that. But my concern is, if we approve one big tower, and then you come back to us in three years and say we had one big tower, that was for them, and now we need lots of little towers all over the place, why would we, are we looking backwards with the big tower? If we're just gonna need lots of small towers?
I, I, I'll, it, it, the, the, the fact remains that the macro tower is still the most efficient way to deliver service to the wide area. Um, as the micro cells that uh Tim was talking about, that they, they are what you put on the, the top of the Wegman store, provide uh densification in areas where there's a lot of concentrated people in an area, but you can operate the small cell without the reliable macro cell on top of it. So it's sort of like an umbrella and then, then I, my words, sorry, Tim, but it's a hotspot, right? At Wegmans, everybody's calling on, what did you need, right? Lots of text messages going back. So you, you, you provide uh around, around colleges or around particular commercial areas is where you see a lot of the small cells. In, in the more suburban uh areas, you still need to have the macro network that serves as the, the backbone of the, the network. And here, you just don't, you know, we don't have coverage. This is, again, I, uh, this was described to us as we've been trying to get this for five years. This is probably one of the top priority areas in, in, in the Syracuse area to provide coverage. We've been at it for five years. It's been identified by third-party uh peoples that, people that analyze all of the networks for T-Mobile and ATC etc. They, they do drive tests and they identified Woodchuck Hill Road as an area that had no coverage. Not Verizon, third-party people and I, and identify. It's been published. So again, this, we've been at this for a long time, so the need here, you don't have even macro to get into the, to the micro. I think we want, the question from Professor Johnson was, is if we reduce this tower twenty feet, there's areas along the edge that will lose coverage. Maybe you could fill those with a micro cell. That is a potential possibility. I can tell you from, as I said at the planning board, what Tim's concern is, isn't so much the edge, it's also what's happening inside of the coverage area, not on the edges. But there's still undulations in areas and trees and things that are in there, and that twenty feet would have made a difference, some difference inside the, the, the coverage area. But again, you need a strong macro, and I can assure you, putting a micro down Woodchuck Hill Road with all the leaves and all the other residential that's around there is not is not the answer to the question. The planning board asked us, and Professor Johnson asked us, what is your plan for additional towers in the town of DeWitt where there isn't coverage? And we said, look, we plan uh, uh, three year, three to four years out, took us five years for this. This is extraordinarily long. But we, 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 and it's not, uh, they're constantly looking for search areas and, 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 and the usage on, on the network changes from, again, I'm speaking for Tim, month to month. But, so we can't really predict in three years what's gonna be the hottest site in, in the Syracuse area, right? We can say, we probably need one on here, and they start working on it. And again, they only can build a hundred, a hundred and fifty sites in upstate New York in a year, right? They have to pick the hottest site. So we know there's one tower that has one need that's been identified a couple of years out up by the airport, that might be in the town of DeWitt, might be in the town of Salinas, it, it's, it's right.
Right on the border, yeah, right on the border.
Right, right on the border. And it's, it's not even to a point where we have identified a location, that's the only other place in DeWitt that there is a plan for additional towers, if you wanna call it. It's a spot that's been identified for one, nowhere near, it could be in a different town, could, and who knows whether, how soon that will rise to the level of being uh, you know, proposed. Nothing's leased, nothing's, alright, so uh, that, that's the only search area that's been identified. I just wanna respond to the property, uh, just for the record, the property tax issue, the planning board asked that question too. Uh, and uh, uh, there's two things. Um, I, again, that, picking on you about being the same age, when I, when I was uh thirty-five years old and buying my first house with my wife, the first thing that we thought of, and I'm sure many people here is, uh, we need to buy a house in a in a school, in a good school district. And the factory survey results, now I'll tell you, this is documented in the application, that uh, that connectivity with reliable cell service is more important to the, what I would say, the younger generation, it's not aging myself, and selection of a house than school district. I'm shocked, right? But they, the, the fact is, if you walk into a house, filter will tell you, and you can't connect, people don't, uh, people don't wanna buy a house, right? They, they need connectivity for their daily lives, they're working at home, they need it for public safety. And so for people, uh, again, you can imagine going to as many hearings as I do, hearing the property values issue. I think you have to consider the impact of not having reliable wireless coverage in an area and what that does to the property values. Uh, we have provided a series of, in this big six-month at the request of, of the, of the planning board, a series of property valuation appraisal reports that identified the, the um, sales data for real estate in and around Anadaga County, um, actual sales data before and after a tower was built. And in each circumstance, uh, the, the um, uh, that, that there was no, there was, there was no difference in property. And in each circumstance, uh, the, the, uh, that, that there was no, there was, there was no difference in property values in that, that area. Just the data, it's actual sales data, and it's provided in the report if any of you have interest for a form by us, uh, certified appraiser.
Anyone have anything else to add?
So the rule, our, our position here, we're approving a special use on this lot.
Specific use permit to locate a telecommunications tower, telecommunications tower within seven hundred and fifty feet or in a residential district.
And separate from the politics, the health concerns, the, you know, the opposition, it has been deemed a requirement by the utility owner and is recommended by the planning board.
Or by the government too, the government is saying that.
What's the Anadaga County position? My, I froze up because my.
County plant, I think it was a no position.
Yeah, they didn't take a position.
Planning board, county planning board?
There's no choice, and why are we even here?
No.
We still have to review the record and make a decision, we could tie the application.
Oh, thank you, appreciate that.
No. No significant first, any community or countywide implications, and maybe a non by the firm for it.
But they have to show that they've provided the least impactful option of all options.
That can be all that we're hearing.
Yes, so.
And we can, we all.
That's what the planning board is doing, that's what they're going through, and they're finding that out for us so that we don't have to go and do that.
Right, well, that's.
Yes. I was looking at like. Different kinds, different location, things like that.
So recommendations.
Five years, uh, what is that, sorry.
Recommend to our board, you know, they go through that legwork and they recommend to our board what they're finding something.
Right.
And we asked for different locations, and the window is so small that really the only locations they looked at, like Jared was saying, was that water tower, which didn't work, and then that HOA land, you know, just north of, north east of the site, which can't be developed on, so there wasn't really anywhere else except for residential properties. So it really weren't a lot of options.
Right. I guess that's what I'm getting at. Do we as a board concur that there's been enough due diligence by the planning board to ensure that they have selected the least impactful solution of the essentially one point one solutions?
And I, those reports that were done by the experts are part of the public record and, you know, you can review those and see what they said, if, if that's helpful.
I think it's an unfortunate timing, isn't it? We only have four members here, so we have to be unanimous in order for this to pass. And if it doesn't, then we have to appeal it.
Yeah, I mean, you probably could continue to discuss it if, you know, because sixty two days.
We don't have to vote, you feel like there's more discussion to be had, you can table the hearing and we can go back and talk about it.
No, I think it's been long enough, I just.
We can close the public hearing and talk about it, do the decision. Sixty two days we have, make a decision. From the time you've closed the public hearing, you have sixty two days, so.
You can use that if you want to.
I'm not sure it warrants, it's been long enough. I just, it's unfortunate timing that we're voting on a day where we have to be unanimous.
You don't have to be unanimous, you could be three to one.
Yeah.
Oh, three to one, sure, 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 sorry.
And it's two to two, then you could table and get it for.
Understood.
If you'd like, I can read the five recommendations from the, uh, from the consultant, if it'd be helpful to you.
That what?
The conclusions, I'm sorry. Yes, this is the town's consult report, and it says, uh, there were five rec- it says, based in our review, we find that the applicant is satisfactorily addressed the recommendations in our preliminary report. There were several, several questions raised, with the exception of findings eight and twelve, which had to do with the FAA markings and future wireless buildup, which we addressed before the planning board at the last meeting. So all those issues were, uh, addressed. It says, we recommend the applicant resolve these issues in the official record, and we've done that. There are five comments. It says, our analysis concludes that the currently proposed one hundred foot tower plus four foot lightning rod is at or near the minimum height at the proposed location to achieve a balance between aesthetic concerns and adequate technical performance based on our review of the evidence submitted by the applicant. Two, the applicant has stated that Verizon reserves the right to seek an increase in height should post-construction testing demonstrate the need for saying. We recommend that the planning board discuss the subsequent conditions that might trigger exercise of their reserved right to increase the height. The process for town review of the evidence that would justify a height increase and the implications for ZBA review unless the planning board is agreeable to allow the applicant to unilaterally, to applicant a unilateral decision to do so. Again, we discussed that at the, at the planning board at the last meeting under one certain, we have no plans for future sites other than up by the airport. Three, while we do not believe the FAA marking and lighting is required at this location, we recommend applicant affirm this understanding on the record and supply evidence to verify saying. We provided the FAA report, uh, that they requested. Given the coverage gap that exists, gaps that exist in the area of the proposed site and those that will persist even if the site under construction consideration is approved, we anticipate that the town will receive additional wireless telecommunications facility requests in the future. We recommend applicant discuss their broader site deployment plans with the board, particularly in relation to these unresolved coverage areas. I just discussed, uh, that plan. It says, given the historic growth of mobile wireless service demand, we recommend the town anticipate the possibility that applicant and then others may propose additional base stations within the town jurisdiction and in the surrounding area. So those were the recommendations, the final recommendations.
Any further discussion? Any motions?
I think we should make a motion.
You.
Making a motion, do you approve?
Yes.
Any seconds?
A second.
By Max, a motion by Jamie to issue a, to approve issuance of a specific use permit to allow for the installation of a telecommunications tower slash antenna within seven hundred and fifty feet or in a residential district, seconded by Max. Go through the criteria, is the proposed use appropriate for the particular lot and location?
Uh, yes, but only because there are no other alternatives, and the record demonstrated, you couldn't put it anywhere else.
Serve the need.
To serve the need.
And that was, and also flushed out by the planning board, right?
Yeah, correct.
Always use unreasonable, detrimental neighboring properties, areas and districts?
We shared something about several residents were concerned about.
On number one?
No, on number two.
Two.
Several residents were concerned about the detrimental impact on the character of the neighborhood.
And property values.
Nonetheless, without alternatives to equip the tower, those concerns were outweighed.
I have a consideration to turn. Always use consistent with an orderly and appropriate development of neighboring properties, areas and districts.
Uh, it's consistent with, um,
Self-service, self, self-service.
the needs of the community for cell service.
Proposed uses, where joined by existing or permitted uses is the proposed use of suitable transition between neighboring properties, areas and districts.
Only because no other alternatives are possible.
Always use an appropriate evolution of the compromise plan. Increase cell coverage, I think, that's what I'm saying.
Yes.
Contability. Okay, got a motion by Jamie to issue a specific use permit to allow for the installation of a telecommunications tower antenna within seven hundred and fifty feet for a residential district, seconded by Max, call for a vote, member Pascal?
Yes.
Member Perrin?
Yes.
Member Trevette?
Yes.
Member Corn, our vice chair, Cornfeld?
Yes.
Congratulations, Jared.
Thank you.
Four oh.
And the seeker, is that already, you said that at the beginning, right?
Seeker, I said seeker, yes, unlisted, no environmental impacts.
Alright, and so did they, did they do the negative decla- oh, you've already done that?
We did it at the beginning, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Welcome.
That brings us to Mr. Corona and twenty twenty one Ryder Cliff. We're gonna take a five minute break.
Well, I'm unanimous on ours, so it doesn't matter.
Let's go.
Let's see if those, if.
Yes, lovely, yeah, we're gonna talk about it tomorrow.
We were here for the cell tower.
They were all here for the cell tower. Joe should be short, and so he's got, he's, he's got an updated survey. We just gotta confirm the numbers for Joe, I think, and.
I, I can come back next month. I really actually kinda mean that to her, this one.
That's exact. If you'd like to come back next month, that's, that's okay, fine, I've waited so long.
It's fine, my client would not want me to wait until next month.
Oh, none of us, nobody wants to come here.
That would be against the left and right, right?
Quiet, can we get the air conditioning working?
You know, the last time I was in for a planning board, I was emailing the building's person during the meeting, and he said, I'll look at it tomorrow. But I was on vacation, so it was.
I know, it was hotter last time, my shoe is not as wet, but I'm extremely uncomfortable, so.
Yeah.
Well, you know, silly me thought because it was cool outside, that, hey, I can wear a long sleeve shirt.
Right, yeah.
You were at the last planning board meeting, weren't you?
Right, yes, clearly I shouldn't have.
Do the windows open? No.
No, I'm not.
It was just.
You are the last person to.
It's meant to be a sealed building.
Yes, right, yes.
Well, are you here for the, the last? Yeah, so I don't know when, when that's going, so I'm seeing.
Alright.
I'm trying, I've, I've brought it up several times.
There's something you, there's something you can't.
So five years, you're all pointing at us.
Well, that's why I'm like, we, we, we're not putting a shirt for our country, so.
I don't know, I don't know that.
Man, staring. Really, I don't know. My back is, don't. Don't turn around.
Alright, Joe, let me pull up your cert, your, your.
John, yeah, there's something, uh, superb, in order to do the subverses.
And so, Joe, this is a table here, and there's no, no notice of public here required.
No, now, right, yes. The dress. I'm not being certain, so thank you.
The problem at the last meetings, guys, 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 it's getting really late, it's, try and finish here, guys, soon.
There's a lot of cell trees.
Ryder Cliff.
Yeah, so last time, it was just on my eye, which, where the existing structure was to the property line. And I said five and a half feet, and the existing one is actually six and a half feet from the property line. Uh, the proposed, um, deck would be five point eight feet from the property.
So the nearest corner would be.
Right, so it's even further than, than.
That would be three point two feet for the single side yard. Yes, you, you got more space.
Right.
Slightly, but yes.
And then.
Same with the total.
Yeah, and I just took some more pictures of the unusable, um, power lot is. So, um, this is actually the street view, it's the street view, this is the top of the existing structure. Um, so it's not as a, from the street, and here it is, our side yard, um, dips down so, so violently. Uh, my wife's good notes. Um, and then we will take this, you know, blockage out, and we're gonna plant trees there.
They're busy.
No, no. Um, and this is the inside from the current structure.
Okay.
Um, and then Derek already approved the permit for the work.
Got three different variances still. So first, we have the, the building size itself. That's an area variance of three hundred and seventy one point eight square feet.
Well, well, you, this was set, we put table this, because there were supposed to be additional documents submitted, those were.
This is the drawing, the drawing.
That's what we're looking at, so the, the problem is, oh, yeah, you weren't here last meeting. The problem of the last meeting was the survey and the numbers on the variances. The third variance is just the size of the addition. And so, cause he's doing, it's kind of a half and half situation, he's got the shed slash golf sim, so that's why it's not.
His numbers were estimates before those are official.
Yeah.
It's firm without.
Our code says four sixty, he is.
I see a, I see a, a, a stamp from a surveyor.
He's going for thirds one point eight.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's larger than an outbuilding can be.
Yes.
And there's, it's closer to the lotless than there is?
Um, the second, the first one's a building size, second one is a single side yard variance. That's now three point two feet, and then he's gonna have five point eight remaining to the property line. And then he also needs a total side yard. So with the, with these changes, he's got, um, total side yard setback of twelve point seven feet. Somebody's request would be for twelve point three feet. Similar to the last ones, but slightly actually more space than the last ones. Makes sense. Start with any of them or ask questions or?
Do, I think you should, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a lot, I'm playing catch up here too, I, I'm.
Yeah, I was reading over it, but I think I, I think I understand what's happening.
I mean, I don't wanna slow us down here, if everybody's in agreement, I can just abstain.
No, I, I mean, that was up to, Nick came out to.
That's why it's, that's why it's.
Yeah, and Nick came out to the property to check it out.
I, I viewed the property, um, heard Joe's pictures, it's, seems, everything seemed within reason. The property itself is one hun- or where the addition is going is one hundred percent unusable land, there's debris, um.
And the slope is bad.
The slope is, it's unusable. Um, his neighbor, it is visible from the neighbor's house, Joe personally owns the neighbor's house. Um, I believe you had neighbor letters of recommendations on the, on the, on the side.
Yeah, from the, from the other side, yeah.
The big thing for me from the street, it, you know, like, how intrusive is this gonna be of the view from the street? And it's, I'm tall, and like, I can see everything, it was, it was, to me, it was subtle. Um, you could see it in the picture, it's the, the small tip, obviously, it's, it's coming more towards the road, but not taller in terms of his, the addition that he's doing.
So it won't change the.
It's not gonna change, and on my opinion, I don't think it would change the view. And you did talk about doing some landscaping.
Right, and we're gonna put our bodies.
In the front, which means it'll be honestly less visible than it is now. Um, from my walk through the property, everything to me looks.
And the, because of the.
Pretty within, within reason.
And then two gentlemen who worked here last time, the reason why we wanted to extend is for safety issues, because it is golf simulator. Um, and we had six or seven family members in there over the holidays, and, um, everybody had to stand against the, the back wall.
So you're, you're adding on to an existing outbuilding, the structure's already there.
Yeah.
You can indoor, outdoor, uh.
Well, it's gonna be indoor and then the deck will be outdoor.
So you're, you're expanding it and adding a deck?
Correct. To cover the, um, the land this night.
It's a lot of structure. Everything consistent with the home in terms of the way it looked.
Building materials.
Correct.
I don't, I don't have a problem with it, I.
Why start with motion?
I thought, I thought, you know, I'll move to approve, because I thought this was just really matter cleaning up the record and making sure we had a survey.
We needed the.
We need the numbers, we need to have numbers.
The official survey.
Yeah, we need to have numbers.
But I was at the last meeting, I didn't, didn't sense that there was strong.
No, I think we were.
We just need to formalize those surveys.
We were ready to move forward, it was, we just didn't.
We recognize that we might not own this adjacent property forever, so due diligence, so it's reasonable.
No, the survey was old and it was all hand job, so.
Understood.
I didn't wanna guess on the numbers.
Sure, I don't, I don't move to approve.
Didn't wanna guess on the numbers. Motion made by Dan to, and we'll start with the building size. Motion by Dan to grant an area variance of three hundred and seventy one point eight square feet for an accessory structure that is eight hundred and thirty one point eight square feet.
So you're you're expanding it and adding a deck.
Correct. To cover the um the land this night.
It's a lot of structure. Everything consistent with the home in terms of the way it looked.
Building materials.
Correct.
I don't have a problem with it. I.
Why start with motion?
I thought I thought, you know, I'll move to approve because I thought this was just really meant to be cleaning up the record and making sure we had a survey.
We needed the.
We need the numbers. We need to have numbers.
The official survey.
Yeah, we need to have numbers.
When I was at the last meeting, I didn't get a sense that there was strong.
No, I think we were.
We just need to formalize those surveys.
We were ready to move forward. It was we just didn't.
Because.
We recognize that we might not own this adjacent property forever, so due diligence, since we need.
No, the survey was old and it was all hand jobbed.
Understood.
I didn't wanna guess on the numbers.
Sure, I don't.
Didn't wanna guess on the numbers.
I don't move to approve.
Motion made by Dan to and we'll start with the building size. Motioned by Dan to grant an area variance of three hundred and seventy-one point eight square feet for an accessory structure that is eight hundred thirty-one point eight square feet.
One second.
Um, seconded by Jamie. Um, according to the criteria, is there an undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties created by granting a variance?
No, it's consistent with other houses in the neighborhood and because of the unique terrain and topography.
Nice.
It would be difficult to do anything else that.
Benefits sought by the applicant achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance?
No, because of the unique.
Any structure.
Structure.
Yeah. So requested variance substantial?
Yes.
I'm saying yes.
Yes.
Any mitigating mitigation factors though?
I don't see that.
Yes, yeah.
Well, it's big.
Is there adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district?
No.
So a large difficulty self-created?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, motion by Dan. Grant area variance of three hundred and seventy-one square feet for three hundred and seventy-one point eight square feet for an accessory structure that is eight hundred thirty-one point eight square feet. Seconded by Jamie. I'll call for a vote. Member Pascal?
Yes.
Member Perrin?
No, I'm gonna abstain from this one. I didn't do my homework like Dan and I just.
Member.
Sounds like everyone's in favor, so it's gonna pass. And I would just rather not vote on something that.
Member Trevette?
Yes, pass.
Member Pascal? Oh, yeah, yeah, do you can. So yes, uh, vice chair Cornfeld.
Yes, you pick another email.
No, I'm sorry.
Well, if you don't vote, we don't have a corner.
Oh, I have to vote.
You can't say.
Okay, yes.
You can make Joe come back.
Are you saying yes on the record as your vote?
Yes.
Okay.
My my full trust in my fellow board members.
Remember Perrin has changed from an extension to a vote?
All due diligence. It's in the backyard, right? And you don't have any neighbors back there.
Correct. We're all we're all happy for lots on that side of the street. Um, we back up to Lemoine College.
Okay, that passes. Go to the next one. One second, I'm just.
Next one is a nine foot side yard variance. No, a three point two foot side yard variance.
Yep.
Cause it's a wrap up to the neighbors. I move to approve that as well. Is there a second?
First.
One second.
Okay. Seconds.
No, wait.
I'll just do that after. Um, okay. Request by Dan. Motion by Dan to grant an area variance of three point two feet for a single side yard setback of five point eight feet on the west side of the rental structure. Seconded by Jamie. Go through the criteria. Will there be an undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties created by granting a variance?
No, it's consistent with other properties in the neighborhood. You know, other thing about the part of it too.
Some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance?
No, because of the unusual nature of the property.
Subtle side cutters.
Requested variance substantial?
Yes.
Three point two one nine feet?
Three point two feet. Yeah, it's still cause it's so close.
About a third of it, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Will the proposed variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district?
No, but it is self-created.
Self-created, it's a big yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion made by Dan, seconded by Jamie to grant an area variance of three point two feet for a single side yard setback of five point eight feet on the west side of the structure. I'll call for a vote. Member Pascal?
Yes.
Yes, member Perrin?
Yes.
Member Trevette?
Yes.
Vice chair Cornfeld?
Yes.
Passes.
One more, twelve point three feet.
Yeah.
Total side yard.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Nick. Any seconds?
No, sir.
Seconded by Dan. That's a motion to grant an area variance of twelve point three feet for a total side yard setback between both side yards of twelve point seven feet. Go through the criteria. Is there an undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties created by granting a variance? So we have just the last one, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Still gonna ask the questions. Is there some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance?
No, because of the unusual nature of property. It is substantial.
Requested variance substantial?
Yep.
Passed about half of the variance. Will they adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district?
No, but it is self-created.
Self-created, yes. Motion by Nick, seconded by Dan to grant an area variance of twelve point three feet. A total side yard setback twelve point seven feet. Call for a vote. Member Pascal?
Yes.
Member Perrin?
Yes.
Member Trevette?
Yes.
Vice chair Cornfeld?
Yes.
Joe, congratulations, my friend.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Sorry I had to wait for two hours.
Oh, that's fine.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you for your patience.
I got out of going to dinner with my wife's friends.
Did you pay for buddy?
That's that's on the record.
This is being recorded, yeah.
Try that on the record.
Enjoy, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay.
Seconded by Nick.
On the last one.
All right.
Let's talk about the trees.
All right, thumb drive.
Okay.
Let me try and get it to work. Here.
Look at this scenario for a minute too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll take a little break here. Let him sit off.
No, not the the cord hanging down.
Pretty handy. Didn't work. It's still worse. I think it's gotta go there.
Did I bring that? So it's like scroll right into the B's.
It's gotta be one of these guys. Does not see it.
No, look on this PC and see if what else comes up.
That's. I don't know how it's that. It should be like a D or an E or an F.
Yeah. Right, right. Alana's right. It's not reading yet.
Um, you just sent you just sent me earlier. You sent me email.
I sent you an email that has a PDF of the PowerPoint that I created.
Okay. I get the PDF.
Um, thank you for joining the meeting. Share the screen.
Because I couldn't send you the actual PowerPoint. And I tried to send you the actual PowerPoint. That got kicked off.
He has to join the Zoom meeting and share the screen.
Okay.
That makes sense. And she's gonna show.
No, I'm gonna but I logged it as a town, so.
PDF.
This is this was tabled from last one, but.
Right.
Oh, we were here.
We felt like different view. You guys were.
It's tabled for the last one. Dan and Max were in here. We wanted you to hear it.
I'll be tabled again, right?
I think the public here will hopefully post that.
We're interpreting.
Interpreting comments.
We try. Yeah, I'm on the.
So much better.
See, it's showing is muted and then unmuted itself. All right, let me type an email.
During Zoom, is your mic on? Turn your mic off.
It is now.
Okay. Yeah, I sent it. I think I copied you, Alana.
Yep, you did.
Round five. No. Can I go to your name, right? And then you'll share?
I will share.
Okay, I have it.
Weird way.
Hold on, I think it's gonna work. I'll actually bring them over here, Kathy, so I can try and get.
Okay.
They did look clear. I I looked briefly. I didn't hope it was clearer.
Well, and then on if 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 this ever works, like the photos are also on there sort of each individual. I kind of combined some of them on the slides just to improve them picker, but
There's more years.
It'll give us an idea anyway. And then you have all of the individual photos independently. At one point, they weren't folders, but I don't think my IT department, when I put them on the thumb drive, because they have to do it because I can't. Our firm is like so super secure. I can't put files on a thumb drive unless I encrypt it. And if I encrypt it, it's of no use to you. So I actually have to send everything to my IT department and have them put it on an unencrypted thumb drive. And I have to convince them that that's okay because it's a public meeting and it's all right. So anyway, um, that's 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 my saga with.
And I always about supposed to scroll through this.
I think I need to.
Yes, I think she needs to.
Oh, I'm stupid.
Yes, just tell me where you want me to go.
Yeah. Okay, um.
Right, so this was the oldest photo I could find. I don't know. At one place, it says it's two thousand and two and another it says nineteen ninety-five. But in any event, you can see, and this is just for starting purposes, this is the worst photo of them all, right? But.
Oh, wait, you can see. We're not we're not on the record.
Oh, okay.
No, yeah.
Sorry.
Sorry, I thought you guys were just like having a conversation.
No, we're trying to all hopefully.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tonight before midnight, that's what I want.
Same. Ready? On the record. Okay, we're good now. Um, so Kathy Bennett, Buncha, King King, on behalf of Magnum. So I put together one of the issues last time had to do with, right, sort of vegetation, wanted some historical photos. So I went back, used Google Earth um, and kind of put together this PowerPoint um to sort of show historically, right, the vegetation, the clearing, the vegetation, the clearing. So this is the oldest photo that I could find using Google Earth. Um, there's a couple dates on it. This says March of ninety-five. This is December of two thousand and two. In any event, it's the oldest photo that I could find. It does show that there's some vegetation on that site. It's also the worst of the bunch. They get better.
Where's the area here that we're talking about?
This. We're talking about this area in here.
That's all now gone? Is that correct?
It's not all gone, no, because there's a stand of mature trees back here. And you'll see that throughout the photos. So there's a stand of mature trees here. And it'll be much clearer in the upcoming photos.
I don't wanna be handy.
And then sort of a stand of mature trees adjacent to four eighty-one that will sort of provide reference points. Those that those stands of mature trees were never removed at any point in time. It was always just the shrub, scrubby sapling vegetation that would grow up in between cuttings. So if you wanna move forward.
I'm can I I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
We we just we dove right in. For those of us who weren't here last month.
Oh, sure.
Could we just do like a summary, a quick high level overview of the application and what was discussed last month?
You wanna give a mini brief?
Yeah, yeah.
Just before we dive in.
Yep, so yeah, so what we're talking about here is this is the property adjacent to the Amazon property um on Kirkville Road. Um, it's owned by Magnum. It Magnum was cited with a violation of section, wow, I got it, one ninety-two dash one oh seven C two and C four of the town code, which has to do with um clearing of property. And so we appealed the issuance of the notice of violation with the argument being that the cutting of vegetation that was done on the property did not amount to clearing under the zoning code. Uh, and the reason for that is the town zoning code defines clearing as the removal of living trees. Um, removal is not defined, but is generally understood to mean as extracting stumps and roots. Um, that meaning or understanding is consistent with section one ninety-two, one oh seven, which relates to excavations, site grading, filling and clearing, or in other words, development of the site. Um, in fact, the distinction between clearing and cutting is supported elsewhere in the town code. Specifically, section one thirty-eight dash six of the town code prohibits public trees or branches from being cut or removed. Uh, and then sections sixty-seven dash three and sixty-seven dash four of the town code require owners or occupants to cut and remove um from said property all weeds, grass, et cetera. Uh, in addition, there's a provision of the New York State Real Property Actions and Proceedings Law, section eight sixty-one, that provides an action for the cutting or removing of trees. Uh, so it's clear that cutting and removing are not the same activity and clearing is defined as removing. Um.
Can you zoom up for one second? Why was the property or cutting vegetation?
Why were they cutting it? Because you'll see sort of historically that they go through these periods where they go in and they cut the shrub, scrubby vegetation, and then it sort of grows back up. And then they go in and cut it again, and then it grows back up.
My point is there's no development.
There's no development proposed at all at this at this time and not that I'm aware of it in the near future. So there's no development at all being proposed. This is and you'll sort of see there's sort of a pattern of, for example, in two thousand and three, it's been cleared. So, you know, kind of, I think they had intended to do it annually, but they don't ever seem to manage to do it annually. So it seems to get done every, you know, here every couple of years. And then it sort of gets extended out to every six or seven years.
Was there a fine associated with that notice? Or is it just a um a a citation?
I I don't know that a fine has been imposed at this point because we appealed it, right, so.
We can't. No, we we haven't done any processes. All we've done is send a notice of violation.
A notice of violation.
Brown believes that this is land clearing. The cutting of the trees is land clearing. The applicant believes you can cut the trees and that's not land clearing. Just cut as much as you want.
I got it.
Right, and then I I so I guess before we get it right, we there were no stumps removed, there were no roots removed. If you when you look at the photos, right, you won't see holes or gaps or piles of stumps or roots. Um, it is, you can see if you look closely some stumps, but these were, you know, to the extent that there were any trees, we're talking about very small saplings because the equipment that was used was a brush hogger that doesn't cut anything wider than four inches in diameter. And it cuts it very close to the ground.
Are those living, those saplings, if you're aware of? Those living trees still?
But they weren't removed.
No, but no, it's just an honest question. Are those saplings living trees? Is that a you know, yes or no?
I don't know. They're saplings. They're vegetation. I there's no definition. There's no definition of tree though. So you know, how big is, you know, a sapling compared to a tree, right?
Trees are living. Just just a simple question.
I don't. I get it. I get it. But my position is is it was cut, not removed.
I understand. I understand your position very clearly, very very clearly.
So in any event, as you can see, in two thousand and three, it's been cleared.
Got it.
Um, and then if you wanna just advance it.
So.
I took some different angles to of that same, but this is all the same area. Um, this is that area along Butternut Creek. This is, you can tell that this must have been in April before the leaves really popped on the trees, but you can sort of see, right, the larger stand of mature trees here. Um. And then you can see over here where the larger stand of mature trees is along four eighty-one. Four eighty-one is over here. Okay. And then in two thousand and five, again, you can start to see the vegetation starting to come back in after the cutting, the mature stand of trees along four eighty-one, and then this mature stand over here. And this is all what eventually becomes Amazon over here. And again, just some different angles, right? So you can get a good sense. This is Butternut Creek, so it's right at the back edge. And you can really sort of see, you know, the differentiation between the mature trees. There's sort of a, it's hard to like, you know, get a good angle, but I think this sort of gives some perspective that those are tall and whatever vegetation here is not.
That's that's looking south, basically. That's shadows.
Yes, definitely. That was looking south, yes. And then this next shot will be sort of a.
This is kind of about noon on a day, so you can see the shadow line of the trees, so.
Right, and then this is, you know, just to give you a a sense for that vegetation along four eighty-one again. I I tried to kind of do that sort of same, sort of the one from the side and then two shots um to the south. Um, so two thousand and six, uh, again, property was cleared.
Still two thousand?
Yeah, yeah, that's still two thousand and six. And then. So this is two thousand and nine. Again, vegetation growing back in. The mature trees haven't been disturbed.
That's really good.
Yeah, this is also two thousand and nine, so I apologize. I should have said that higher.
Those were all trees that are kind of growing up there? Are those all trees that are growing in the middle there and then they keep getting removed as they grow? Is that correct to assume?
Everyone's.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know that I would assume that they're trees, right? Shrub, scrub, brush, probably some saplings. Um.
But there were trees as part of it. Would you say you said there were some stumps?
So what what I.
If there are stumps out there, were those cut?
Yes, and what the contractor said um in his letter was that, how did he describe it?
And they're and they're not dead trees, right? Dead trees wouldn't need anything, right? They could.
Oh, I don't know that they're not. That so actually I have a picture coming up where it looks like there might be some. Oh, I don't know that they're not, that, so actually, I have a picture coming up where it looks like there might be some dead trees mixed in. But in any event, the contractor said that there was tall grasses, scrub brush, and immature saplings of buckthorn, cottonwood, poplar, box elder, sumac, and other like kind invasive species.
Also, those were not trees.
Right, I don't, I don't know, but that's what, that's what he characterized it as, so. You can keep moving forward, Alana, thank you. And then again, just sort of, this one's a little blurry, but you can see the Butternut Creek, and again, sort of the mature trees and this other vegetation growing in.
So this was two thousand and nine?
That was two thousand and nine, yep.
So I guess, were permits issued incrementally for years for this to be cut, I guess?
They did come to planning board and.
I have a permit in two thousand and twenty here that I was going to share later, but this is for Project Orange and, um, six eight three four Kirkville Road, and they're requesting a, a tree cutting and clearing permit. So they are requesting.
It's, it's late, so.
Was that for this property?
Six eight three four Kirkville Road.
Well, I'm gonna let her finish her presentation, please, just keep going, you'll get a chance.
Right. Yeah.
Everybody, everybody get a chance to.
Right, two, again, two thousand and eleven, there's still vegetation there, you certainly have your trees, your trees here, here's your Amazon, um, property. You scroll through pretty fast at this point, Alana, thank you. Uh, yeah, keep going. Right, two thousand and fifteen, vegetation has now become heavier, whatever it is. But again, not mature stands of trees like you see here.
What it was?
And then sort of this line back here.
What's in the, what is that? Is that just brush?
Yes.
It's that growth in the new area.
Trust me.
Yeah.
That's green.
Well. Grass looks green, huh?
So I agree.
Right, so here I thought was an interesting picture, because here you can sort of see like, you know, what appeared to be either, you know, sort of branches or dead tree stands, um, mixed in that brushy area. And then in two thousand and seventeen, was cleared.
Wow.
Right, but not sort of the, the stand of trees over here, and then not, which is harder to see along four eighty-one, but not the mature stand of trees along four eighty-one, right? But you can see the, the tractor marks from the brush hog.
How large is that area, would you say? Acres and acres, or just, what do you say?
Can we do this on that?
That particular area?
Just area, you're talking about clearing here, that was all green and now it's all barren. So with the area, that's even as.
Probably thirty, forty acres.
Wow, okay.
And I believe the applicant last time said that this two, twenty seventeen one, that they had come in to planning board for this one, I think we.
They came in for planning boards and they recognized that one, so.
That, 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 that's what I was told, was saying, yes.
Trust me, okay.
And it was sold in, what, twenty seventeen or something like that?
Twenty seventeen, you didn't see the trees along the, the road at all.
And then just.
Twenty seventeen? And that picture, that cat picture?
Right. Do you see the trees?
I don't see any, I don't see trees at all.
I, I, right, so I think the time of, right, so if this was April, it would be probably hard to see, right, the, the trees without the branches along the road. You can sort of see where there are trees in the back here, um, even though obviously the leaves haven't.
Well, I thought they just.
Bloomed, yeah.
I can't discern whether they are or are not there.
Well, you'll see in the next picture that they're still there, so.
No, two thousand and nineteen, they just look, they're there, but they look small.
Right, and then, so you can keep going on, so this just shows, right, the, the clearing, the, what was left on the ground from the clearing in two thousand and seventeen.
What does all that mean?
So that does not look like a, a brush hog did that, that looks like something like it was actually.
What is that?
Excuse.
Are those cold trees laying on the ground? Is that what I'm, we're looking at?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, interesting.
Does not look like a, the same, the same technique that was.
How many trees would you think, would you guess that is?
I don't know, I, and I, I have no way of knowing, right, like, it, it is hard to tell the size of whatever the debris that's left there. But I will note, what you don't see, right, are big holes where roots and stumps have been removed. In two thousand and seventeen.
But even if you did clear it in two thousand and seventeen, that's way outside any time period for the town to have issued a notice, right?
Yes.
So that's all, whatever happened in seventeen happened.
Right, but, and, and I was kind of trying to establish a pattern of, right, it grows, they clear it, it grows, they, right, and then cut it.
From game to twenty-four.
It might defend the permit.
It grows, they cut it.
They clear it, yeah.
They cut it, they cut it.
Can I actually say word?
For the record, can you guys, you're talking all at the same time, and it's really hard to record it, get a clearance.
Oh, sorry.
They're already getting a clearing.
Sorry.
Right, it grows, they cut it.
Got it, got it.
You can keep going. And then, right, two thousand and nineteen, it starts to grow back, you can see the trees are still here along four eighty-one, and the trees in the back by Amazon, and then soon you'll get to see, actually, Amazon, um, popping up. So you can just scroll through the rest of them at this point.
I don't know if anyone wants to miss that.
So that was twenty-one.
That's twenty-one, right. And so we're talking about this area that's over in here. And you can see the line from the larger mature trees, and then this scrub, shrubby vegetation. That's still twenty-one. And that's twenty-two, you can see it becoming a little more fuller.
Twenty-four.
And then that's twenty-three. And, oh, I, again, I will just note, right, you can see the line from the larger mature, mature trees as opposed to the shrub, scrub, sapling, cottonwood, what did he say? Buckthorn, poplar, box elder, sumac, and other similar species.
Box elders and poplar are trees.
Oh, yeah.
The, the rest of them are weeds.
Oh, no, weeds. It's long, yeah, it's, something.
Uh, this is just, I, I thought, you know, this sort of gives you a perspective of how big the mature trees, um, are that were left. To just help differentiate in size.
So you said it was done with a brush hog, is that right?
Yes.
In twenty twenty-four.
In twenty twenty-four, it was done with a brush hog. Use it, it's a skid, skid steer attachment called a brush cutter that allows, uh, for the cutting of vegetation with a maximum diameter of four inches at ground level or very close to it.
And then that's what was removed from the property?
No.
No, it was, uh.
No, it was left, it was left it there, so like, cut, cut down to the same. Like, just, like.
Look at the picture in twenty twenty-four, I just feel like, how could?
You can see the little rows where it left the.
It looks like there's a lot of trees in the picture from twenty twenty-three. I feel like, I mean, maybe the pictures aren't doing it.
The picture just could just have all the, it's everything's laying on the ground now.
I know, I thought they're, it's, it's all that.
Right, and I think you get a better sense.
Because here, you see all this, the, the trees that were.
You can see the pictures in there, you can see the, the cool trees.
Right, you can see it, you can see them all here, right, like everything that's lying on the ground in, in that photo.
Yeah.
They're saying that they can cut it down and leave it there, and that does not mean it's land clearing.
Right, and, and again, pointing out, there's, there's no holes where they've removed any stumps or any roots.
We will add these pictures to.
Record.
The record, yes. Is there anything else, attachments, anything that you're looking to add to the record here, Kathy?
No, I, the, and you, you got the letter from the.
I got what you sent me a couple weeks ago.
Yes, it's on seven plus.
Yes, I sent it to Sharon, okay, Sharon, it was on seven plus, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. This is the last photo.
Okay, um, anyone in the audience want to say anything? Uh, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, I do. I'll be a few minutes, you can have a seat if you want.
I'm gonna stop the screen shared so I can talk to you.
I, I'm Ed Mike Michael, I'm supervisor in the town of Whit, and I'd like to speak to the intent of, of this code. I want to start by saying.
Could you spell, I'm sorry, could you spell your name for the record, please?
Sure, M.I.C.H.A.L.E.N.K.O. First name's Ed.
Thank you.
I've been a environmentalist for my entire forty year or more, uh, career. Uh, I received my doctorate studying the recovery of the solid waste material which forms thousands of acres along the shoreline of Anadog Lake. Uh, a focus of that study was the tree and vegetative recovery. I still, to this day, on occasion, teach some specialty courses up at ESF, but I've cut there for a good thirty years, signing off. I have done research for the EPA and the Agency for Toxic Substance and Disease Registry, the National Library of Medicine, the U.S. Geological Survey, the Fish and Wildlife Service and the Forest Service. Good number of those grants have dealt with trees, uh, land reclamation. I run the Anadog Environmental Institute. Done that for thirty years now, and the main focus of the institute has been the recovery of Anadog Lake and the surrounding lands. We're still focused on the nineteen ninety-three plan of action, which is the management plan for recovery of the system. The major focus at this point in time is tributary restoration. And a good piece of tributary restoration for the lake is vegetative recovery, wetland creation, reparian, uh, vegetative recovery. And we use brook trout as the sentinel species, because when you can restore a brook trout to the system, we know all conditions are correct. And a major focus and simplest and easiest way to recover tributaries is to shade it. Eighty percent of most waterways in central New York are exposed and open to sunlight. Once you shade them, you, uh, restore oxygen, and our research is showing, we thought we'd just preserve cold water temperatures, we're actually lowering temperatures. You could take warm water in an exposed sunlit farm field and run it into a shaded area, and the water temperature would actually drop. And so I don't tell you all this for any other reason, to say I know trees. We sponsor the Anadog Earth Corps, we launched them in the city of Syracuse. They're a underprivileged and underserved community. Their main focus is planting and managing trees. And so that's one of our proud accomplishments. So anyways, I was elected supervisor in two thousand and seven. And two of my first ordinances that we passed under my, uh, regime was the tree ordinance and this ordinance that's in question here. And the purpose, the intent of this ordinance was to prevent removal slash cutting of trees en masse. You've all been in seeing developers, let's take the housing development, for example. And the easiest thing for the developer to do is go in and wipe out all the trees, put the roads, the sewer, the water lines, the infrastructure in place, all off the lots. And that housing development typically takes at least thirty to thirty-five years before it has a tree campus. Any urban forest can remove up to seventy-five percent of a rainstorm in a twenty-four hour window. And so I can go on and on for infinitum about the benefits of trees, but, uh, we intended this for both business. You take counter crossings, for example, there's several buildings and counter crossings that are surrounded by the forest canopy. Because the intent of the law is that you have to have a site plan, you have to be approved, and only to, no, no, against tree cutting, when you have a site plan and you have a purpose to remove those trees. We should have cited these guys back in fifteen. This law was put in place in two thousand and eight. We've suffered for a decade or more due to lack of coenforcement officers. They're just beginning to recoup them, and so this was overlooked. But, uh, the, uh, tree ordinance that goes hand in glove with this, we regulate trees and right of waste. We have over a hundred and fifty miles of roadway, so we have a considerable number of trees. In the time that I'm a supervisor and I use the institute to bring grants, we planted over twelve thousand trees. But we pride ourselves in planting the right tree in the right location. And we, and the way, you can go talk to National Grid, I'll bring back statistics if you need them, but we have less power outages than most communities around us, because we've had a tree ordinance in place for eighteen years now. But we don't plant oak trees under power lines. We plant shallow rooted trees over water lines, we have less sewer backups. You go into the city of Syracuse, they have forty, the four thousand SSO sewer events a, a year. We have less than half a dozen sewer events in the course of a year. I don't know how the county does our sewer maintenance, we work with them closely. So again, forest management is extremely important, and I'll argue for the economic reasons. It's for flood control. This site's classic, it's right along Butternut Creek, it's flat. We've never had more than a five inch rain event in central New York in a twenty-four hour window. Look at Texas, just last week, where you get that ten, twelve, fifteen inches of rain. This site's gonna be a washout without those trees, but trees help reduce and mitigate flooding. You looked at the areas in Texas, there wasn't a lot of forest. It's a desert, you know, southwest soils don't accept the water, so. So again, part of the big picture, regulating beyond the development is places like along Butternut Creek that can reduce flood potential and flooding. And so again, we have a long term restoration plan for the waterways, we're expanding wetlands. And we've tried to work with this developer over and over again, on the Amazon site, on their own site. We accepted sewers against our own engineering advice, because the hookup to the sewer was on a problematic angle. And so again, we tried to work with this group, and, uh, I strongly implore you as a body, that the intention of this law was to do exactly, to prevent exactly what they went and did. They went in and they cleared the entire parcel without a site plan, without work, and, and they, and they, and they should be familiar with our code. They can look these things up, they got away with it in two thousand and fifteen, they came back and they did it again, and again later. And so, Michael, their interpretation is just frivolous, it's malicious, it's almost invasive to think that the intent was to chop trees down and lay them laying on the ground. So, I mean, if, if you have any questions, I'll be bored and hand me the ask, I'll answer them.
There are a bunch of them, thank you. Any comments from the board?
I would just point out, though, that if you look at the photos, it wasn't clear cut, the mature stands of trees are still there.
Comments from the board?
So we're, we're discussing the definition of the word clearing.
We're discussing this code section. You know, I'm gonna pull up the code section.
Yes. I think we should, because I have a question about it.
Yeah, I just need a second.
It's discussing the department's interpretation of this section of the code, that's what they're.
Right. And I'll, I'll do a little explanation, I think it may help, um, so, okay. And this is the code section, I'll give my spiel, I guess, first, I just as EBA attorney, kind of how I'm looking at this code section, and, um, and, and, and at least have that on the record, and the board can take their leave and go from there. Just as a starter, and I'm gonna read from this, so just so I get it right for the record here, and I'll try and speak slowly for you guys. The applicants are arguing here that although trees were cut on the property at six eight three four Kirkville Road, the actions did not constitute clearing, because no living trees, stumps or roots were removed from the property. The applicant argues that the trees can be cut all the way down to the stump, and that would not constitute removal of living trees, because stumps and or roots were not removed. The town planning and zoning department argues that the applicant cutting trees in this manner without stump removal or other excavation constitutes the removal of living trees, and is therefore clearing of land under the town code. Living trees that are cut down to the stump cease to be living, and regardless of any further action by the applicant, the cutting of trees in this manner constitutes rule of living trees. That's the opinion of the planning and zoning department. And we look at the code section. Section one oh, one ninety-two, one oh seven C. Section one oh, one nine two one oh seven C. As we've discussed, it defines the land clearing as the removal of living trees. The stated exceptions not included in clearing are selective removal of trees as part of an approved forest management plan, the removal of dead trees, trees posing a hazard, or the pruning of trees. Significantly, the written exceptions to clearing do not include cutting of trees or any other variation of cutting or any exception that supports the applicant's cutting of trees being exempt from a development permit and site plan review. Looking at section one ninety two dash one oh seven B, scrolling up. This subsection requires a property owner to appear for site plan review and obtain a development permit to excavate, deposit, grade, or remove topsoil or other earthy materials for use on or off the premises. Therefore, the code already contemplates that applicants who undertake excavation and other ground disturbance, including stump or root removal, must appear for site plan review and obtain a development permit. However, the board took it a step further in two thousand and eight by adding subsection one nine two dash one oh seven C. The board already contemplates what is required for excavation and ground disturbance in section one nine two dash one oh seven B. In subsection C, the board specifically intended to protect against the removal of living trees and promulgated procedures for the removal of living trees in non residential districts. The board intended that any removal of living trees, including cutting trees down without stump removal, constitutes land clearing regardless of whether the stumps and or roots are removed and require that those property owners in non residential districts appear for site plan review and obtain a development permit for cutting trees in this manner. They did not require that land clearing must include stump and or root removal. There's nowhere in that section that talks about stump and or root removal. Um, certainly, they didn't require stump or root removal for that section to apply. Um, they certainly could have and would have made an exception for the cutting of trees if that's what they intended. Um, taking a look at the history of the property, it shows that the applicant was and is aware that cutting of trees is included in clearing a plan. The development permit that I've passed out to the board, and I'll have copies for the applicant as well, um, is for Project Orange in twenty twenty. Project Orange is the name of the larger project in this area, six eight three four Kirkville Road. The applicant, and that's signed by Marco Masrafi, who is the owner of White Waters. The applicant submits a letter for tree cutting and clearing permit, putting the actions together, does not separate them. Uh, this shows that the applicant was aware in twenty twenty, um, that's Mr. Masrafi at six eight three four Kirkville Road, was aware that clearing of land contemplated the cutting of trees and that the cutting of trees was not exempt from a permit. He's requesting a permit to cut trees. Further, there's another land clearing resolution, which I'll pass out here to the board from our planning board. Give me one second. Pass this down. I got all copies to you, Kathy. Give my tour.
Are those.
To Kathy. In here. Just two attachments here.
Yeah, thank you.
If you look on. Excuse me. Alright, look on page two. Starts at the bottom portion of page two, it says National Grid Substation. Now, this is not the same property or the same company, but the National Grid portion starts at page two. This helps show the town's understanding of land clearing. Specifically, on the second paragraph of page three, the resolution states, "The cutting shall involve trees only, no shrubs or other plantings, and no grubbing or stump removal is permitted." This helps show that the town back in two thousand seventeen considered the cutting of trees to be consi- to be sufficient to constitute the removal of living trees, and therefore, the action was determined at that time to be land clearing that required site plan review and development permit. Those minutes are from a site plan review. So there, it was understood that land clearing does not require stump and or root removal as this approval was only for the cutting of trees. Um, and those are my thoughts on the interpretation and the history, or can comment as you would like.
This is from two thousand seventeen.
Correct.
And we've got evidence, pictures in two thousand seventeen, and they clearly were were trees cut in two thousand seventeen.
Clearly.
But we're, we're not going all the way back to that, right? We're talking about things that happened in twenty twenty four.
We're just interpreting the code. We're not, we're not the judge in a town court, we're interpreting the code section. So looking at the terms of the code, what did the town board mean by the language? What did the town board intend? Supervisor Michelanko has appeared, talking about the town board's intent. He may be the only guy who can talk about the town board's intent um, because he was here and he was actually supervisor during this time. Um, and then.
The decision is if you want to overrule the department's interpretation of the code.
But, but in two thousand seventeen, trees were cut down. We don't know what happened in twenty twenty four, whether there was shrubs or there were trees, is that right?
Right, right. Our department's saying that there were trees and that they were cleared. Kathy is, uh, the applicant is saying that.
There were no trees, it was just.
They did cut, but they weren't, it wasn't land clearing because they didn't remove anything. These are using the plain term of removal, right?
They probably, yeah, they probably, yeah, go drink.
And in any given five, seven year window, you're gonna have what's called volunteer growth in a primary successional stage of tree species moving in. And so, they admitted some of the species when they said poplars, right? But there's a number of quaking aspens that are probably the predominant species in this area that would come in. They, they cited some invasive species because most people don't like avases, right? So they cited buckdorm and a couple of other uh species. But the, but predominant volunteer growth area of a typical northeast forest would start off with things like poplars and uh potentially an elm, and you'd have some uh yellow, yellow poplars and.
So if they, if they cut everything down in twenty seventeen, and it was all the way down to the grass, what would have grown by twenty twenty four?
Oh, same species.
But how, there wouldn't be trees yet, they'd just be like.
Well, they'd be trees from the time they're a seed, a seedling. A tree is defined as a plant that grows into a dicot or a monocotic species. A, you know, an herb, species vegetation or a scrub is defined by its species. And so, left unto itself, the northeast will revert to forest. And so, as soon as you stop cutting, that very first year, year two is gonna start to seed in with woody species. So whether it's five years, seven years, ten years, the longer it is, the more you would recognize it as immature primary forest. Once those early species are in place, they get replaced by tree species that like growing in the shade. So once a poplar tree is fifteen feet tall, a maple will come in behind it. It's a predominant species in this area, so we have sugar, we have rad, and we have silver maples. You know, but there, there's a variety of species in each one of those general categories that you would call a poplar or a maple tree, a beech tree. Eventually, you get to some of your taller, more uh mature. An oak tree won't come in until uh, the, the pictures she's shown around the area are already established. So they've repeatedly logged this off, which is a clearing, a clear cut of a woody species.
So I thought B had like, there was some wording in B that I thought is a little confusing. So no excavation, okay. I'm just trying to understand the, the excavation, how that fits in with everything.
Disturbing the ground requires site plan review and.
Which they didn't do technically, technically, right?
And a SWIP.
That's correct, but the board is saying when, when you do that, this is, you have to go to site plan review and development permit. And they specifically carved out trees here, but they don't talk about any sort of excavation or stump removal or root removal or anything in there. They talk about removal of living trees. So the question is, if you cut a tree down to the stump, a grown tree, cut it to the stump and leave it there, is the living tree removed or not? The town says yes, that you're removing living trees. The applicant says no, you're just cutting it and leaving it there. So we can cut and leave trees anywhere we want without any penalty or having to do anything.
No, no, I think what they're also saying is that these weren't mature trees.
Yes.
Well, so that's what I'm, I think.
For them, they're, they're.
There's more focus on the.
Well, this doesn't talk about mature trees, it's just living trees.
Of their living trees. Living trees, they're mature or not, it could be.
Doesn't matter. So.
Yeah, it could be sad land, it could be anything that's living.
It could be a living tree.
And, and section B, how that differentiates is that that is actual, you know, digging things up, and you would need a SWIP and a site plan, that's a different action than.
But we didn't get there though. So I don't know why, I don't understand why it's been brought up though.
Right, which is why.
Because it's just interpreting the code, you look at the whole section.
Because it's showing that C is different, that C is not pulling out stumps
Okay, okay.
To show the town board.
Okay.
Because that would be covered under B.
So C talks about the exception, well, clearing should be, but it's foul, so, you know, so.
Says what's not included, yes.
Right, what's not included.
Yes, and cutting's not in there.
Right, right.
Nothing what the applicant's saying is in.
But I think that's the more pertinent part of this.
Agreed.
I mean, I think the other stuff's sort of.
B is only commented on because it helps inform on why the board put C in. It helps, it just informs the whole section. But yes.
And, and why C can be considered clearing without taking out roots and stumps because that would fall under B.
If the board wanted to say that stump is a root removal.
Because you'd have to, you're digging to remove them.
Yes, and you would need a SWIP, you'd need a site plan, it's, it's a protection.
Okay.
If that's what they wanted to do, they would have done it. They would have said, this, this includes only stump removal and root removal, only lawn mow.
Okay, alright, I, I follow you now, okay.
No.
So, and so the, the really, the, the across the matter is C in, in supported by B.
Yes. Correct.
Alright.
The intent is supported by the intent of the whole code section, which already talks about excavation and ground disturbance.
Mm-hmm.
It's not talking about that in C.
If they were super diligent, and in two thousand seventeen there was a clearing, but then every year thereafter, every six months thereafter, they went around with a lawnmower and just kept it, kept it low, that wouldn't be a clearing every time they went around with a lawnmower, right? That would just be mowing.
But they didn't do it, so.
Not if there's not, maybe if there's.
No, 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 but, but it's more like hypothetical.
No mower stumps, yeah, not mowing anything, got more stump, ruin the mower. It's not just flat land, there's your stumps, and trees are laying all over the ground, that's what's, that's, and they're just, they're saying they're not taking a forklift.
No, I get that, but, but they're, they're also saying they're not clearing.
Well, they're.
They're just sort of tending the way.
Talking about the semantics of the term clearing.
Yes, removal and cutting, they're, they're talking semantics.
By saying landscapers consider clearing to be something different than what the code says, where's that? Our town board isn't filled with landscapers, I was saying that this is what the town board's intent was when they created this section, not necessarily looking at the semantics of landscaping.
We look at the language of the code, and we look at the town board's intent to, to try to determine what the town board wanted at that time. And, and that's what I was, I was speaking to.
I got you, I got you.
So, last time, you talked about if there was a lack of clarity, but we're saying there is no lack of clarity to.
I'm saying after looking at it, I don't believe there is any, any lack of clarity.
Okay. Okay.
After having some time to go through it, interpret the code and look at it, I think it's pretty non ambiguous. I do think it should be resolved in favor of the town.
And we're just, Project Orange is being mentioned as supporting evidence that there's a history of.
They submitted a tree cutting permit, that's why it's gonna submit.
For thi- for this parcel?
Yes, for six eight three four, it's signed by Marco Masrafi, so it's the same person.
Who's the same entity?
It's the same person who, who's the manager of White Waters. So the app, it shows the applicant was aware that tree cutting, you gotta come in for a permit.
Okay.
And then the cover letter actually says tree cutting permit.
Then I would agree with you, I, I think that's it.
Why, why would the town board have said clearing if it meant you can cut down a big tree and leave a stump?
That wouldn't make much sense.
I mean, come on, like, like, would that give anyone free rein? Like, we'll cut down an entire forest, all we didn't clear it because we didn't remove the stumps?
That's what happened in C.
I, I, I understand. I, I think we could get, we could spend all the time looking at these blurry, grainy, like, you know, satellite images to try to determine what the, what was done where. I'm sure it varied by location too, every year, maybe one tree was twelve foot one year and they didn't get it, so then the next time they went, it was fifteen feet. But then there were some new ones that were two feet and they got those. I, I think the spirit and the intent is of the code is to prevent, you know, entities coming through without, you know, oversight and removing trees from, from the lot, I, yeah.
But, but I, I agree with you. But if that happened in twenty seventeen, right, the clearing happened in twenty seventeen, just to mention that. And all they were doing is stopping it from rolling back in twenty twenty four, is that still clearing in twenty twenty four?
So, I, I'm not even sure if it matters.
That's not a relevant question, because.
Well, I'm not sure it matters either, but I was curious. So to, to, to Ed's point, a tree is a tree based on its species. It doesn't matter the size, it doesn't matter if it's a sapling or a mature tree. Based on its genus and species, I'm not the scientist, it's a tree, tree's a tree. That said, I could see why there's, it is a perceptive difference between rubbing a small, you know, inch diameter, you know, sapling versus cutting down a mature tree that's contributing to, you know, providing shade for, for, for trees. I looked it up, I was curious. So a poplar tree, trees are typically measured at, you know, the diameter at breast height. So the time to reach four inch is what is often considered a mature tree or no longer a sapling, is four to seven years. So sure, if in twenty seventeen it was clear cut, and then they came through now and it hasn't been cut since, you know, you would think those are likely pretty mature trees. But were they the exact same trees in the same locations that were cut in twenty seventeen, we'll never know. I mean, I think the spirit and intent of the code is pretty clear. I, I, and I also, I'm, I'm, I can't help but be a little bit curious what the applicant has to gain here. I'm ju- just out of curiosity, so look, there's a fine, a fee, they submit the permit, we work through it. I, 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 I'm just a little bit curious, I wasn't here last month, so I, I don't understand. But like, with all being on a formal record, like, I'm just trying to understand what, like, what, what, what the applicant's intent here? Is it to avoid a couple hundred dollar fine and a couple hundred dollar permit that they need to apply for every few years?
To keep clearing, keep clearing land and everything.
Especially if it's not, there's no intent to like develop a lot. I, I, I just don't quite understand what we're doing here, I'm. Real quick, I, I, really, I don't know.
Well, I think what we're doing here is trying to figure out whether or not it's clear, right?
No.
Was, was this clear?
Yes, is that, that's the question? The question is, is cutting of a tree clearing? Is cutting included in clearing, not specifically this action?
Yes.
It's not, nothing to do with this, they're asking to interpret the code. So we have to take a macro lens, look at the code, look at the history, look at the language,
Gotcha.
listen to the supervisors talk about intent, and form an opinion on did the board intend for cutting to be included in removal of living trees? Or did they intend for applicants to, as they please, cut down trees on the property without any oversight from the town? That's the question we're really asking right now.
Gotcha.
Um, I think the answer is obvious, um, but it seems like the board agrees. So, uh, do you have anything else you wanna add, Kathy? Any other, anything else before we close the public hearing?
No.
Anything else from the board? Okay, um, make a motion to close the public hearing? Okay.
I'll make your option.
Do you want to make some motions, seconded? Uh, Nicholas, all on paper?
I.
Alright, pose, staying, motion's carried. So, under the town law, we have sixty two days to issue a decision. So, we will do that within the statutory time requirements, and um, we will send it to your act, you know, to your client as, as soon as it's done.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so, don't need to come to future meetings?
No, I will notify you, we'll probably, we'll probably bring it up at the next meeting
Okay.
and then, um, once it's resolved, I will let you know immediately, considering.
So we don't, we're not voting on it?
No voting on anything, I'll have a draft and we'll, and the board will come and, and we'll, we'll give it up.
At the next meeting.
Yes.
Will they off the record?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome, thank you.
Great night. Motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Thank you.